Going to call to order today's regular city council meeting of the Jackson City Council. Good morning, everybody. This morning, we're going to start with our opening prayer and our pledge by Representative Ronnie Crudup of New Horizon Church. If you will, please stand. And after that, we'll have, I'll ask if Councilman Foot will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pastor. Good morning. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this awesome day that you've given us. Thank you, Lord God, for blessing us with good health and strength. Father, I pray that you would guide us today, guide this meeting, Lord God. I pray that you be with every city council member today, Lord God. Give them wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. Pray also, Lord, for the mayor and their staff, Lord God, give them wisdom as well. Lord God, I pray, Lord, and most of all, Lord God, that you will give us love and unity in this city. So, Lord God, we need you. We thank you for everything that you've done, Lord. I pray that as we continue to conduct your business, Lord God, for the city and the people of the city of Jackson, help us to end this year and end it well. So, Lord God, we thank you and praise your name in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, my dear friend, Pastor Ronnie Crudup Jr. Appreciate you, as always, coming by. And also thank you, Councilman Foot. We do have a quorum of four. No, yes, five. Hold on, I think we lost them. Okay, we have a quorum of four. I think we're having some technical difficulties, but we do have a quorum of four. And we'll start with announcements. Colleagues, anybody have any announcements or special openings? Yes?
Yes, I just would like to congratulate you, Mr. President, on being named to the National League of Cities Board of Directors this past week.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Any other opening comments? Any other opening comments or special openings? Let the record reflect that now we do have a quorum of five. Councilwoman Lee is Georgia Sonadias. All right. Colleagues, we have, since we have not been having routinely our citizens' agenda meeting, which is on Thursday, and I know it's going to be hard to have it this month due to the holidays, I want to allow one person that showed up to bring forth public comments to speak, and I would need a motion to suspend the rules to do so.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved, second, that we suspend the rules to allow for public comment during this meeting with the non-agenda item. All in favor? Councilman Stokes, what say you on suspending the rules for public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let the record reflect, we now have a quorum of six, and the measure pass is six, zero. All right, rules are now suspended. Tashia Jaiif, did I say that right? Okay, yes, sir. And when you get to the mic, just state your name for the record. Come, come this way. Well, you're fine, come on. You already here. Good, man.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tashi Jolz, and I'm coming here today to address this issue that has been going on in the Jackson metro area in the recent weeks. It is the road closing of the intersection on I-55 on the I-52 Frontage Road by East Northside Drive. Now, I understand that the road closings for the waterworks and sewage is necessary for the development of the city, but it is nothing but a complete harm to the property owners nearby. Firstly, the water closing and the sewage works, we did not get any prior notice of the issue that has been going on. If we had received this prior notice, we would have taken some preparations or some countermeasures to overcome the negative cost that will be coming into our business. And now, second, I would like to also address that we did not get any completion date from the waterworks. We asked the workers that have been working on site to give us any kind of deadline or and like assumptions when the work will be completed, but we did not receive either of that as well. Now, our main concern here is that if you actually look on the geographical region, most of our customers are coming from the I-55 or like the Highland Village area. Now, because the road closed and we cannot gain access to those customers, so in result, we have lost 60 or even more percent of our business. And this means that we are unable to overcome the cost for items and such, and we cannot even pay our salaries. This is especially really bad for our business. And now, I would also like to address that some countermeasures, counterplans we can't take to overcome the costs and help the property owners that are nearby. Firstly, we can't have the workers that are working on site actually work 24/7. Right now, they're only working eight hours and taking the weekends off. Now, I understand that there might be some low numbers in employment, but because this work is really important to the property owners nearby, we need to have more workers on site working 24/7 and working diligently. Second, a counterplan we can take is that there is five lanes in that road that they are working on, but what the workers can do, they can take a section of the road, close that road off, and let the other lanes go by. And the lanes that are closed off, they can start working on it. And when they're done with that road, they can start working on the other one and open that one. Now, those are just some counterplans we can take to overcome that the harms that this issue has brought us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Amari, first, then we'll come around.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for coming and voicing your concerns, but I'd also like to let you know that Jackson Water is responsible for that work. We received your email either late last week or earlier this week, and we've instructed our Public Works Director, Robert Lee, to meet with them to address the concerns. We were not notified as the city that that closure was going to take place. So, we want you to know that we are working with Jackson Water so that this kind of, so that we get advance notice so that we can notify businesses that will be affected, and we are also working to see if we can come to some kind of solution to your problem right now. So, I don't have an answer, but I do know that Robert Lee is meeting, he may have already met with Ted Hennepin this morning, is tomorrow. He will meet with him tomorrow, and he will address this issue. But I, once again, thank you for bringing your concerns to us.
Thank you.
Councilman Foot.
Thank you. Dr. Amari covered most of the points I was going to make, but I was just going to say that you need to call Jackson Water. You can call them at 601-500-5200. And tell them the situation. I think your idea about having 24 around the clock makes a lot of sense, particularly since it's a high traffic city road that you're on. Thank you.
Mr. President? Council, what's, excuse me. What's the name of your business?
Fast Lane.
The gas station?
Yes, sir. It's a gas station community store.
Yeah.
And there's also a liquor store beside our gas station, which has also been affected.
Okay. All right. Councilman Hart.
Yes, whose ward is this in?
Mine.
That's your and your ward?
Mine.
Just thank you for bringing up that issue. Again, I appreciate the fact that you acknowledge that it's a business-community relationship that's going to make everybody winners. And I have the same in my ward. And I also would like to thank you. I know you have other gentlemen there with you in the back. I don't know if they're your owners or your parents or whatever. They're parents, okay. But I'd like to thank you. Look, we need more energetic, critical-thinking young folks stepping up, even stepping behind this counter as well. So, I just wanted to just acknowledge that, that it's very impressive that you've already thought through those whole scenarios and have worked things out. So, I certainly appreciate your energy and your forethought, and your parents will be to be commended for preparing you as such. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other questions or comments? Young man, how old are you?
I'm 14 years old.
14? Man, keep going. Keep doing what you're doing. It's impressive.
Yes, it is.
Colleagues, at this time, we'll go to consent agenda?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved, property second on this item. Are there any questions or comments? Here now, all in favor? All right, item passes, six, zero. All right, we have introduction of ordinance next. Number seven, go ahead.
Ordinance amending the City of Jackson Classification and Compensation Plan to add the job classification of Marketing Coordinator.
All right, this is an introduction of ordinance, and is there any explanation for the, on the record for this? I know we discussed it in work session, but is there any explanation on the, on the record to be reflected in minutes?
Toya Martin, HR Director, this is an ordinance where we are trying to create a job classification for a Marketing Coordinator. This position will be used to, for Department of Planning and J-Trans to market J-Trans. This person will be responsible for all advertisements related to ridership, community outreach, social media advertisement, but this person will be specifically working in the Planning Department, marketing J-Trans.
Mr. President? Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes. Thank you. In terms of the insurance for our employees, when will the time to sign up start and end? Do we have a way of notifying some of those employees who are not covered so that everyone will be on the same page?
Yes, open enrollment for employees will be December the 4th, I believe, to December the 7th. We have posted flyers out for those employees about open enrollment, and we also sent out a global notification to all employees. If there's, you want to make any changes to your benefits, we ask that you show up, but otherwise, it's an automatic renewal. If you don't plan on making any changes, or if you want to speak to somebody, one of the vendors there, you can show up at open enrollment. It's going to be at the Police Training Academy.
Now, it's my understanding that all the employees are covered. And it's absolutely free.
For single, yes, for single coverage, it is free for employees.
For all employees?
Yes.
And it's only charged if they have family members, right?
Correct. Employee plus one or family.
Employee plus one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how do we make sure that all of our employees are covered who might not know they have free insurance?
Well, we've been communicating with the departments. Actually, we've been holding those strategic planning meetings with each department where our benefits administrator actually goes out to each department notifying them of the benefits that they have. Now, even though the insurance is free for single, employees still have to enroll in that plan in order for them to be covered. We just don't automatically give those employees coverage. They have to actually roll in it, because some employees have coverage in other places, and they don't want to interfere with their benefits. But we've been doing outreach and education with the employees, so we're pretty confident, Councilman Stokes, that our employees know about the benefits that we offer.
Can we get maybe next meeting, meeting after the next meeting, a percentage
Of employees that's covered.
Of our employees that's covered? Because this insurance thing is a very, very important issue, and if our employees should have insurance and it's free, and they just do not know or understand what it take, then it's up to us to find a way to allow them to know what they must do to be covered.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Especially when we should be, our goal should be 100%. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Lee.
Ms. Toya, our, I know a lot of our riders are disabled. Will the marketing be adapted to reach those individuals, especially those that are hearing and sight impaired?
Let me let Chloe answer that question. Sorry, what was the question?
We have a lot of riders that are disabled. Will the marketing be adapted to reach those with disabilities, especially hearing and sight impaired?
Oh, absolutely. And you know, the new measures we've taken on our buses, they're now audio and visually impaired sensitive, so absolutely.
All right, colleagues, any other questions? Yes, sir, Councilman Hart.
Yes, just on the marketing note, is there a central person that controls marketing for the city, or is that, come on the communications?
That's handled on the communications.
Okay, so say one of our department needs help, like the zoo need more marketing, then that would come under the Communications Department?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, colleagues? All right, this is an introduction of ordinance. Again, it will roll over to the next regular scheduled council meeting. Item eight.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 080 to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $2,702,547.37 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Item fails for a lack of, oh, I'm sorry.
I was distracted. Second.
All right, it's been moved, property second on claims. Are there any questions or comments? All right, Mr. Malinbecker, you want to go over the high points?
Good morning, Fidelis Malinbecker. I present to you the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. The first is hemp hill construction in the amount of $405,577.78 paid out of Fund 32 Water Sewer Capital Improvement Fund. This is for the OB Curtis Water Treatment Plant Membrane Filter. The second is hemp hill construction in the amount of $291,941.92 paid out of Fund 32 Water Sewer Capital Improvement Fund. This is for the OB Curtis Water Treatment Plant Membrane Filter. The third is Metro Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $267,257.98 paid out of Fund 203 Jackson Convention Appropriations. This is for the Visitors Bureau Transfer of Taxes for November 2023. And the fourth is the Evans Agency Incorporated in the amount of $190,587.00 paid out of Fund One General Fund. This is for the Workers Compensation October 2023 premiums.
All right, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, Mr. Malinbecker, two questions on these hemp hill construction bills for the OB Curtis Water Plan. Obviously, it's almost a year since we, the water plant was turned over to the third-party manager. So, is this for work that was done prior to them taking over? What's the dates on these two?
Yeah, so this is part of the SRF loan, because it's, the loan is with the city, will continue to make those payments and submit for the drawdowns.
So, the money to, to, it says Fund 32, but see, I'm trying to find out, when was the work done that they billed us for this? Was this?
Are you to, Mr. Lee?
Robert Lee, Public Works, this is work that's been done over the course of 2023 after the handover to Ted. Because the loan is in the city's name, the city's getting the reimbursement, so after consulting with everybody up to the EPA, we're continuing on the previous arrangement. Ted is overseeing the project, basically acting as a project manager, and then the invoices are coming to us, and then we submit the reimbursement to the state. We're almost at the end on these projects, and it's better just kind of just let them finish off instead of trying to rearrange everything midstream at the end stage.
We are, we are getting reimbursed?
Yes.
By this?
By the state.
By the state. Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes. Mr. Lee, while you're there, we keep, we keep hearing the concern about Jackson Water and the city of Jackson. How do we rectify the citizens who still want to call the city about a problem they experience? And example, on Morton Avenue, from Woodrow Wilson to Lavendale Road, they fixed the, I thought it was a sewer line break, but they just came out and they're like, they just put some asphalt in a hole. Now, if the sewer line need to be repaired, then to put a Band-Aid on that in a poor neighborhood is not going to work. Now, that's one example. The second example is on Marlothian King and Cohese Street, water hydrant been, water plug been knocked over, I know, two weeks. Nobody's come to make the repairs, stop sign, knock down. You know, somebody got to do somebody's job, whether it's going to be Public Works, Jackson Water, the citizens deserve to have somebody that we can point our finger and say, do your job. We don't need to keep passing, whereas Jackson Water is the city. If it's not the city, is it our responsibility to help Jackson Water? If not, Jackson Water need to hire more people and get somebody out here who going to be responsible for the citizens in this city. There's no way, if there's a fire at Cohese and Marlothian King, that you have a fire plug that's laying down and been laying down for weeks, and nobody's coming by to make the repairs, or nobody reporting it. You know, that makes no sense at all, and you shouldn't treat poor people with that kind of disrespect. Why would you fix, just pave, well, I think it was a sewer line collapse on one end of Morton Avenue, but you got three or four on Mobile Street, and you're supposed to be repaving Mobile Street? So, I'm just saying it's inconsistent, number one. Somebody must have the responsibility of completing their job or doing their job properly, whether it's Jackson Water, or whether it's, it's Public Works with the city, or somebody that the citizens can ask questions to and make sure the job is done successfully. Thank you.
Morton, let me put some eyes on that based on your description, because I'm not fully sure if that's sewer or drainage or what's going on there. On Cohese Street, I'll make sure that the hydrants reported to the Jackson Water Call Center, and I'll get our traffic folks to get that stop sign back up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Amari.
I'd also like to say that we, we still get quite a few residents who call 311, and when they do call 311, we make sure that we give them Jackson Water's number, but we also refer directly to Jackson Water so they can continue to take care of these issues that are being raised.
Has Jackson Water sent any type of synopsis or anything helping us to understand their transition and to handle the call volume, or what they do? I mean, has there been any communication when it comes to that?
No, there, there hasn't been any communications in that regards. They do have their second quarter, third quarter report on their website, their, their third quarter report on their website, if, that, where he talks about his progress. But no, there's been no direct communication with the city.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, Councilwoman Lynn.
Yeah, Mr. Banks, we did get the council, I can't remember if you were at this meeting or not, but at the last Public Works Committee meeting, Mr. Hennepin, well, the one before the one yesterday, Mr. Hennepin came and did give us a report. Did I repeat that?
Yes.
I, I am feeling it, Mr. Banks. Okay, so I just, I don't know, I can't recall if you were at the, at the most recent lengthy Public Works Committee meeting, but Mr. Hennepin did come before us and give us a summary and a report.
Yeah, I, I agree. I guess what concerned me is just making sure that whatever it is that, that needs to be communicated, that it's adequate to get to all of our constituents, because I still, and I think we all still feel the, well, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but I all still feel the chaos from the calls we receive from constituents and the frustration. And then it becomes even more frustrating. I'm not here to judge if Jackson Water's doing a good job or not, but therefore constituent that may be feeling still a drip, and then they go on TV and they see a report that says it's a good job, and then they're calling about, you know, whatever, it, it's chaotic. Councilman Brazil? Oh, I was, I'm sorry. I need to turn my volume up, but go ahead. Okay. Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes. Mr. President, you know, when we hear things in the council chamber, and we go to our community meetings and talk to our citizens, I keep coming back to Mobile Avenue, because that's a street that the mayor said they fought extremely hard to get on the list to get paid. We have at least two sewer breaks, and you hate people come pay your street, then they dig it right back up. Jackson Water, whoever going to be in charge, need to treat this as a priority. Now, it was my understanding when we first heard that we're going to get some streets paid, that it would be done before the cold snap set in. And, you know, we slowly running out of time. That's why I'm hoping we have someone at the city level who communicate with Jackson Water, where we can have a win-win, where we can say, look, you know, if we're going to pay Mobile Avenue, go out there, it's not going to take that much work and manpower to make that repair on those two sewer lines before it's spanned to three, so when they come pay the street, you won't have to come back and dig it back up, dig it back up. And that's my concern. My concern is, you know, I'm not criticizing Jackson Water for what they're trying to do, because we see them doing a whole lot all over this city, but they can't become, as we say, sleeping on the job, just because they're making improvements, that they're going to slow down the train. People want to see these kind of improvements made in a speedy manner. Don't, don't treat certain neighborhoods like we got to wait to 20, 30 before we get the repairs made. Come on out, treat some neighborhoods like they prioritize, like you doing other neighborhoods. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lee, is their communication on the proposed next utility cuts as far as water repairs or sewer repairs versus, versus streets that you will be paving or resurfacing?
I haven't got communication as far as what their plans are on water. I know they're, Ted's been talking about focusing on the two and four-inch water lines. On the sewer, they've been doing a lot of sewer point repairs. I think both of the mobile spots are on the list. In fact, the rough spot past that going down towards the south end of the street where the roads all tore up is actually a sewer line replacement done years ago with a bad patch on it. But I've got our, my weekly meeting with Ted's actually in the morning instead of this morning, so I've got a growing list, to say the least, to talk about on our virtual call in the morning.
All right, well, thank you. Now, back to claims, are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. President? Yes. On claims, Dr., what's our status? I'd like to ask this question so we'll be on the same page, because we still have businesses that's saying they're not being paid, and I tell them over and over again that you are trying to create a new procedure where clearing the house will come through you, and that maybe that should have been like that all the time, but what's the status of everything? but what's the status of everything?
Yes, and so yes, it in Word session, I did provide a briefing. Uh, that, that is, uh, a highlight of, uh, our plans moving forward. Uh, in there, we also, um, highlight some of the immediate work we're doing. I think we shared with you that, uh, we made an attempt to collect outstanding invoices that departments have. Um, with that list, uh, it's been updated. In fact, as we go through the claims dockets, uh, we are making payments. Uh, in the, they're setting items that have to come to you, uh, for ratification. Uh, last meeting, there were several of those items. Uh, after you ratified, uh, those, uh, payments are on the docket. Uh, and so we'll continue to provide you an update of what we've collected so far that has been outstanding and the status, right? Showing paid or, uh, it needs ratification, uh, that document is going to capture all that information. Uh, but that document that you have there is the actual plan of how we resolve the, the matters that we're faced with.
Is this my copy?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Omar.
If I may, I would like to go back and make a statement regarding the fire hydrants.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I, Constituent Services travels and they report them when they see them, but we'd also like to advise residents to call 311 when they see them as well, because they may be aware of something that Constituent Services has not reported to Jackson Water. So, if they can still use that mechanism, uh, calling 311 to let the city administration know, so that we can make sure that Jackson Water is aware.
All right. Uh, any, any, any more questions concerning claims? All right, all in favor? All opposed? All right, claims passes for three. All right, next, we have payroll.
Order-proving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 295752, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item. Are there any other questions or comments? Here in all the favor. All right, item passes unanimously. Colleagues, uh, we just, the rules are already suspended. We just had somebody that was down for public comments, uh, that has been trying to get to us for a while, uh, and was just running a little behind due to traffic and the parking issues. And since we won't be having, um, I don't think we'll be having a, uh, citizen's agenda for the next two months, because of the holidays. Uh, I, I, I will allow it, uh, allow her to speak at this time. So, I would ask if, is it Loretta Wells? Loretta Wells? Larita Wells? All right, I got glasses on, still can't read my text. I might need to get some bifocals. If you would just state, state your name for the record. To hit, hit the green button. Yes.
Larita Wells. Um, I'm speaking, I'm nervous. Um, I love my city, I'm a proud Jacksonian, and I'm talking about Jackson beautification. When you're riding the highways, going into Madison, Byron, Pearl, you see the difference on the highways. You see trash when you come into Jackson. You see the highways on the side of everyone else, Madison, Byron, Pearl, Brandon. The highways are litter-free, pretty much. Some years ago, I came up with an idea, I'm like, "Lord, what if we had trash patrol?" I tried calling some official to see how often or how many citations or tickets have JPD given to trash, people who've been dumping. I didn't get a response, 'cause no one can get me to the right direction of who to speak with. But if we had trash patrol, someone who will ride them down the highways with a camera on the dashboard, my children are here with me, they can contest. We ride down the highway and we say, "Mama, there was somebody throwing out trash, there's someone throwing out trash." You have big trucks that don't, you know, bring down, you know, have their, the trucks covered properly where trash is blown out. Why isn't it in Madison, Brandon, Pearl, and anyone else? Is it that we, the people in Jackson don't love Jackson enough to do what they supposed to do about Jackson, about keeping it clean? But if we had a trash patrol with the cameras on the, on the vehicles, catching the people who are littering, fine them, before they can get their tag renewed, they have a fine, they have to pay before they get their tags renewed. Because I, I, I don't like it, and I know other people don't like it. You enter in Jackson, you see, it looks gloomy, dumpy, it, it's littering. I mean, um, they did advertisement, they spending, what, $3 million on litter pickup, on trash? Can we put some of that toward that? You have, you know, people riding the banana highways, catching people who littering. That's just something that, because I hate it. My kids, they, we go through the neighborhood picking up trash in our neighborhood. Uh, we're finna venture out in Meadowbrook, uh, on Watkins, we live in Miss Lindsey Ward. It's just something that lays on my heart about the beautification. I, we do a lot in our neighborhood, and it's just sad to see how when you come into Jackson, on Highway 8 and 18 is just profound with litter, it's just litter everywhere. So, that was just an idea that I had about, you know, Jackson doing a trash patrol, and just, yes.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Wells, for coming before us. I want to say that interstates and highways are mandated by Mississippi Department of Transportation, which is over our Central District Commissioner, Willie Simmons. And we recently entered into an MOU with him, the city, and the county to have, uh, Rankin County inmates come in and start cleaning up the highways, because we have seen a lot of illegal dumping, especially of bulky items such as couches, even refrigerators. I mean, they just dump everything on our highway. So, that is an effort that is about to start. I know MDOT just passed it on their board, so that's something that you'll begin to see. But that trash patrol is really needed in our inner city. I would like to see that in our air, in our neighborhoods, especially certain streets that we all have, that people come and dump, and then the enforcement is really what is needed, 'cause even if we catch them on a camera and take their tag, what is the enforcement behind it? Are they getting a fine? Are they, but I love your idea about, um, when they go to renew their tag, they have to pay this fine, and they're held responsible. So, I, I love that idea, but I just wanted you to know that a plan is coming for the highways.
All right, Councilwoman Lindsay.
I want to thank you for coming before us today, Ms. Wells. I know you care deeply about our city. It's not just this issue, but other issues as well. And I agree with Councilwoman Lee, um, this is needed all over the city, and I love the idea of the patrol. And so, um, Mr. Banks, maybe we can put that in one of our committees and have a, a conversation, a more in-depth conversation with JPD about that. Um, I guess it would be my committee, maybe.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to revisit, you know, we passed a resolution, um, right when you first came on the council, just reemphasizing the state law around litter. Uh, and one of the things it, it does, it does call for citizen patrol accountability. But the thing is, if that citizen captures that tag and captures that information and signs affidavit, is the enforcement going to really happen? And, and I, I think that's where we really have to have that tough conversation, so yes, uh.
Thank you.
You are public safety, right? Okay, yes, okay, all right. Councilman Hartley?
Yes, uh, again, I want to thank you as well, and thanks for bringing your, your children with you, 'cause it's important that they grow up and they see the decisions that's going to help ma- uh, maintain a healthy city. But to your point about littering, I think that one of the most important things that we have to get out a message to our people to change the culture. Stop littering, take it home with you, put it in your trash can, and it goes away legally. But every time you, you throw that cup out, you're telling the whole city that you have no pride in our city. You're telling it that you don't care about the cost it's gonna take to go back and pick that up. You're saying that you, uh, do not recognize Jackson as being as equal as other places. So, stop littering, stop throwing the cups out, stop throwing the bags out, stop throwing the, uh, everything out. Take it home with you, and for, I'm cracking down on my service stations, that's number one. Hey, you, I don't want to see litter around your place.
To comment on that, um, when you go out and, you know, businesses are getting their yards cut, and they're, the people that are maintaining the yards, they're blowing the trash into the streets.
Into the streets, right.
They're not doing that in other cities. Because, I mean, as it, it's like, the businesses should be fine, you know, if we catch you, the people that are doing your yard work, blowing the trash in, in, in the streets, you would be fine.
Right.
Because when they blow it in the street, it's just coming back everywhere else.
It's the same thing, it's, it's littering, and it's clogging up our storm drains.
More, it needs to be something done, because Jackson is, is better than this. And we, we need to enforce the rules, we need to enforce a lot of things, like voting signs. How oft, how, how long do they have to pick those up?
They should be gone by then. And, and just, just one other point, and that is this. Um, we need to have, uh, uh, every citizen reporting someone. If you're throwing that cup out, get that tag number, call it in. Don't confront anyone, but call it in. A cup, okay, from your car. Your car is more important than the city, than, than more taxes to clean up this mess? No, it's not.
So, what's gonna happen, because?
Well, and, and we had a new chief, and we're gonna work through that, okay? We're meeting with him, and he's, I, I, I've already talked to him about doing classes with his, the new recruits on environmental issues such as littering and so forth, like we used to do years ago. So, we're working on that piece, but if we can keep the people from littering and keep other folks from, to, uh, make sure other people re- uh, report them, then leave it to us to do that enforcement part, we're kicking that up. Thank you so much for coming here.
Thank, thank you. Uh, hold on, Dr. Omar, she, she, she.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to tell, I ca- I can't remember her name now.
Ms. Wells?
Ms. Wells, I just wanted to say that we have a Stop Trashing Jackson campaign, and we're always looking for volunteers in the community to work with that. So, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Gray get with you and get your information, because it sounds like you have some really good ideas that we could incorporate into that campaign. Thank you.
Yes, yes, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President, uh, when the citizens come before this body with a, a great idea, somewhere we need to start implementing them immediately. She said that we need trash patrol, and that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
You know, whether we go through Public Works or who, we need to have trash patrol and let the citizens know, we hear them, they're not just talking and we're not paying attention. And I hope that legal would help us, uh, at Emmett T. Park. You know, it's a shame that we had a clerk's office who did not record things properly. And I brought this up several times. The park was given officially to the city of Jackson. City of Jackson spent money, bond money, putting out basketball goals and equipment. You cannot put equipment, basketball goals, on private property. I talked to the owner, uh, the gentleman at the church. Church had to find their records are destroyed. We speak through our minutes, we don't show it. A few weeks ago, somebody put a whole load of tires at Emmett T. Park. If it's privately owned, why did the city had to go clean it up? And it put us in a league of quack mile, because number one, we can't go on private property and clean up anything. If we do not own Emmett T. Park, then we need to get the legal documentation and purchase or something, but we do not need to keep acting as though it's ours, and we're gonna take care of it, we're gonna put city money on there in this private property. It's gonna either be private property, or this public gonna own it through the city of Jackson. That's just one example, but what this lady said is true. We can't keep looking at all this trash and thinking it's somebody else's job. We paid a company supposed to clean up. I thought, and they might be doing a pretty good job. Think we paid more than $100,000, maybe we need to get some more, they need to do a better job, or we need to pay citizens to be what she said, trash patrol, 'cause we got to clean up this city, rats, roaches, snakes. Man, these poor neighborhoods, it's awful. You got rats big as cats. I want to thank you for coming, uh, Ms. Wells. Keep fighting, keep your children out here fighting, because you see, the city of Jackson is better than this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and Ms. Wells, I want to thank you for coming as well. Uh, several, several years ago, there was a young man with the same excitement that took it up on his own to try to do things that addressed the council's name. Well, I call him Coach Brunson, and now he's the manager, you know, uh, in community improvement. So, uh, you, you can very easily, with good ideas, talk yourself into a position, um, to help this city, but we thank you. Uh, I will also say this, um, and I'm sure my colleague to my left won't mind me putting him on the spot, but every time one of our colleagues was speaking of this, he would say, and he's right, "There's an ordinance for that, there is an ordinance for that, there's an ordinance for that." We have to find ways to make sure that we enforce our own laws, and I end with that. All right. That was discussion, there's one more. Is there a Mr., what's the name, Dickerson here? Is there Mr. Dickerson here? All right, is, is, is that everybody? All right. Uh, hopefully, colleagues, uh, we may need to revisit or find a way, uh, to provide the area public comments, uh, so the constituents can chime in. All right, so back to the agenda, we just did payroll, right? All right, so I'm at, uh, 10, item 10.
Order reappointed, Iman D. Thompson, Sr., to the planning board of the city of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item. Uh, I, I, I'll, I'll just say, uh, Iman's not here, but, uh, Iman is also Neighbor Association, uh, president for Brookly. He's very involved with, uh, zoning and planning. Uh, uh, one of his neighbors is Claude McCant, and anybody that knows Claude McCant knows that Mr. McCant. Hard worker, hard worker. Yeah, Mr. McCant is a hard worker, and, and they do, they, they're really particular about zoning, and, and he has been very vocal, um, uh, when it comes to that. So, uh, administration, is there anything you want to say about, uh, Iman?
Uh, no, other than he has worked hard on the planning board and that, uh, the director of planning is comfortable with his reappointment, so I'd like to move forward.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Ms. Dawson for trying to fill the planning board, uh, membership. Um, we had a young lady we trying to get on from our ward, and she's saying, uh, they called, they trying to get her bio. Uh, sometimes, you know, older people, you know, really don't use computers as much as they should, but we got to make it where they can come and talk to someone, Secretary of City of Jackson, to get bios, uh, um, done. Because like Ms. Wells, you got a lot of great talent out here who want to help this city, and they want to be on these boards, but it's like we putting hoops in front of them to jump over. Uh, and I just want to thank you for giving, uh, Ms. Johnson an opportunity to serve on the planning board. I hope we can get her bio and get everything done, and, you know, she's already doing the work in the community. It's just the right thing to do to give her the accolade she need to properly, properly manage what's gonna take place in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you, just, just so that, for the sake of all my colleagues here, that, that process, I know it started when we first came in, and still, if we have a recommendation to the planning board, is just to send it over and, and go from there. So, colleagues, I know that there are some vacancies. Yeah, if, if, if you could just kind of go through it that way, you know, whatever recommendations we have, if you can go through that process.
Uh, Chloe Dawson, Director of Planning, there are some vacancies, um, but we've submitted, um, I think pretty much everyone here has submitted some recommendations, and so those recommendations are under review with the administration. We intend to, to fill both planning and historic preservation board.
Okay, Councilman?
Yes, do you have a, any kind of date on when we could expect to see these, uh, names come forward?
Um, I'm sure you'll see them on the, the next council or the council.
Next council, very good, thank you.
Yeah, I, 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 I would say if it's a recommendation, or if it's somebody within one of the wards of the council members that they may not know of, if before it hits the agenda, there could be a reach out to them so they can at least know who it is. there could be a reach out to them so they can at least know who it is. Yeah.
Sure they're, they're here? Absolutely. I work directly with the administration.
Well, to make sure that they have an opportunity to get acquainted with who that person is since they'll be representing their district.
Okay.
All right. All right. Go ahead.
Yeah. And, and it also gives us an opportunity to call up our community leaders to say, hey, look, this is that person coming forward and get, uh, uh, get information if they don't already have it. But anytime we can get involved or we can at least know who we're gonna be voting on ahead of time, it's very helpful.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments? All right. Um. Yes, number, number two, all in favor? All right. Item carries your name. So congratulations, uh, Mr. Iman Thompson. All right, number eleven.
Order establish, order establishing rental and deposit fees for the use of traffic control devices by person holding events in the City of Jackson, Mississippi, which necessitate the closing of public thoroughfares, thoroughfares, specially, special events committee.
Hold, 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 hold. One second. It, I think this is one that we said that we were going to hold because our neighborhood association is a committee. Go ahead. I, did I put it, was it committee? Okay. Okay.
Public safety.
Yes. All right. So thi- this will be go, this will go to Public Safety Committee, uh, and colleagues, one of the reasons why is because if Ash J. was throwing event and, and Ernest Ward find out that he gotta pay fees at the last minute, it's gonna be a problem. So, uh, yeah, thank you. So it'll go to Public Safety. All right.
Mr. President?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Shaniqua.
Uh, Mr. President, some of the, um, the concerns you stated about the, uh, the South Jackson Parade and others. We don't want to put some of these people groups at a disadvantage. They, they not making money. They, they big and just it.
Yeah. So, so Councilman Stokes, that's, that's, that's why we took it and put it in committee. Um, uh, I, I understand you, you say if it's something that ain't gonna work, just gonna vote it down. Uh, but I, I think it's fair to hear from the special events committee why they want to impose these fees and then if maybe, if there may be, may need to be some layered approach, but I, I think it's fair to hear from, I'm not saying that I agree. I think it's fair that we hear from them why they want to impose these fees.
Well, I hope legal will look at the ordinance because the special events committee, uh, some of the thought that they do not have. Most of this special events stuff is with the police department and the chief is supposed to be the person making these decisions and these recommendations. It's not a person on the these committees. These committees was only set up as a layer where people need to be there, not, they can't just over lift the chief.
You, no, no, you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, especially if it's committed and we have, but it does say Wade and Lamuba.
That's correct. Yeah, he's still over the special events committee. So the committee and Chief Wade, who was over it, this is something that they are recommending.
Yeah.
But we are also looking at the ordinance, but I also do not think there's anything on the floor for us to discuss.
That's why I was, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right. Number twelve.
Order authorizing a memo of agreement between the United States Army Training and Doctrine Command in the City of Jackson to participate in the Partnership for Youth Success.
So moved.
Let's remove a proper second on item twelve. Any questions or comments?
Just, this is a good program. We've heard about it yesterday and it ties, uh, the City of Jackson in between armies, um, uh, re- recruits, folks that are out there that could possibly have cer- uh, jobs in the City of Jackson. And it, it, it's just a win-win for both, for both groups. For instance, if a reservist, army reservist came on, he has pers- special skills in police or fire or or whatever he or she, then, uh, it would open that communication where both parties will know that there's a need for employment with the City of Jackson. And I applaud, uh, Ms. Dodson and others for working on this. It's a very good thing. Thank you.
All right. Uh, any other questions or comments on item twelve? Can another all in favor? Oppose?
No, not the army.
Oh, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Well, you didn't raise your hands, big bro.
I was talking to.
All right. Item passes seven to zero. All right.
Ms. Lee had my attention.
Colleagues, yes.
I, I just want to say that that what came out of H- Human Resources as opposed to planning. It was not Ms. Dodson. It was Ms. Martin.
I, I misspoke, but the Human Resources is what I was thinking, uh, Ms. Martin and, uh, and, but it is a great idea and it, it, it does so much for that person. They can already have a tab on the job, all right? And that's what we want. Thank you.
Ms. Martin said, don't be taking my credit. Uh, colleagues, item thirteen, uh, I am putting in finance committee. Uh, it come to my attention that Trustmark Attorneys had not had the opportunity to review or to see the updated or changes to, uh, what was proposed here. So we'll put that in finance committee. Uh, item fourteen.
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to renew the City Works License and Maintenance Agreement with Aztec Systems LLC.
So moved. Second. All right. It's, it's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone here who can explain this whole item, please?
Great day to you, Amelia Reed, Department of Information Technology. Mr. Stokes, you had a question?
Yes. What's all included in this item?
So this is the, uh, 311 software. It, the license and maintenance is being renewed.
I ask this because we getting so many complaints about 311. You know, people saying, well, I'm calling 311, nobody answering the phone, nothing being done. They also talk about, um, they called, uh, police, 911, and nothing being, nobody answering. So now are we improving it where the citizens won't experience this? Nobody answering the phone, nobody, you know, it's gonna ring forever, those kind of things. Cause that's the complaints I hear. Now, I don't know about others and people keep calling and saying, well, look, there's no need us calling. Nobody answering the phone. Nobody gonna do anything. There's no follow-up.
Okay.
Would this help correct that situation or do we not have a problem? The citizens just?
Well, as far as 311, the system through City Works is being upgraded. So the citizens will have a greater experience when you talking about reporting and being able to see what's being reported. So that's what we're looking at right now. It's sorry, flat. It's to, um, upgrade that system. Yes. I can look into the phone situation.
What kind of warranty are we gonna receive, uh, with this upgrade? Cause sometimes they say we upgrade and it never materialized. We pay a lot of money out, but the improvements are not there and there's no one checking to see, well, yes, this, these are the benchmarks and they were met. What kind of, what kind of oversight do we have to make sure that benchmarks are met?
So one, through the company, there is a maintenance and support agreement that supports the upgrade. In-house, we have someone from IT assigned to work with constituent services in 311 to make sure that we receive every update and upgrade, um, outlined in the agreement.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Dr. Omari?
I'd like to say that I am not aware of people not, uh, answering the phone at 311. And if that is the case, then they should call 1084 to make us aware that their, uh, 311 is not, uh, answering. I know it is fully stacked, uh, and like I said, I haven't had any complaints about that. So if anyone is not receiving a response on 311, they should call 1084 and let us know. That's 601-960-1084.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes?
Mr. President, I, I don't know why, but I still believe that when citizens tell us something that is true, they don't have a reason to lie to Kenny Stone. Now, these people not just making these calls and nobody answering, they telling us, cause we telling the same thing. Call 311. They say, why? Nobody answering the phone. So what I'm saying is that maybe it's time that the City of Jackson go in these neighborhoods and meet with the citizens and ask them, do y'all have a plan or do y'all have a complaint about what's going on about these phones being answered? And I guess the citizens will tell the truth. Thank you.
Uh, question, and this may be a Mr. Mellon Becker question. I know that, uh, when departments have to buy or purchase their technology items, it comes through the tech fund, which is in IT. Is that correct?
Yeah, Fidelis Mellon Becker, CFO. Uh, so not necessarily, uh, all the, uh, equipment would come out of a tech fund. Uh, as we've talked extensively about tech fund, um, it does not have sufficient funding to support all the technology needs across the city. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, tech fund is paying a note on the, uh, $7 million. So that's about 1.1 million dollars, uh, that, that's going towards that note. Um, and, and, and they would not have sufficient funding to support all the technology needs across the city.
This, this is why I ask, uh, and, and I want to ask the Clerk of Council, when, when we put our requests in for like laptops or, or, or those things, when we make that request, where do we have to make the request and where does that funding come from?
Shaniqua joined Clerk of Council. To my understanding, it has to come out of our budget, the Clerk of Council's budget or the City Council's budget.
Or the City Council's budget. All right. So, so there's nothing that when we request for those updates, that has to come out of the tech fund or anything like that? It, it all has to be in our budget?
That's correct.
All right. And all around, departments all around, there's an appropriation within each one of their budgets when it comes to those items or whatever it is that they need? I, I'm just trying to, just trying to get it understood. Cause like even like the upgrades with the chambers and all this other kind of stuff, just, just trying to get it understanding.
Yeah. So it's two things. One is a, a department can actually budget for technology, uh, equipment. Uh, but when the procurement is done, ideally it's done through IT.
Okay.
Right? Um, and I think there was a discussion before with, uh, City Council budget to have an allocation for technology, uh, equipment under the City Council budget. But then of course a request would, would go through IT, um, uh, as a, you know, central procurement.
Okay. So now, now I understand. So basically we have the budget, but then the request goes through your department. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Fair enough. All right. Any other questions or comments? Here in the all in favor?
Abstained, Mr. President.
All right. Uh, item carries six, one abstention. All right. Next item.
Order awarding a matching grant to Stupot Community Services, Inc. for the provision of emergency shelter services during severe weather and authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Stupot Community Services, Inc. for the provision of the same.
So moved. Second. It's been moved and properly second on this item. Uh, any questions or comments?
Think we have them here. Could we hear from Stupot?
I also want to say something. Great day to you all. Javonda Stanton, Director of Stupot Opportunity Services.
I, I think you just want to hear an overview.
Yeah.
Okay. So for our night shelter, is that what we're asking about?
Yes.
Okay. So our night shelter, as of right now, we are under an agreement that when we drop below 40 degrees, uh, that our center will be open for night shelter. Basically what that means is that we'll be open 22 hours a day. So we'll have staff that'll be there, uh, in alignment with making sure that they can have meals, showers, uh, change of clothes, fresh cuts, fresh blankets. They'll be able to sleep through the night. We reopen the center. As it stands right now, we are open until 3:00 PM usually for night shelter. We'll be closing at 5:00, reopening at 6:00.
How many slots?
We can accommodate up to 32 beds. Uh, right now we are serving, we did night shelter maybe three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. We only had 16 at our max capacity. Now, of course, we also have the, uh, the Broome Field Shelter. We fill there first, we catch the overflow.
And we understand the good things that's taking place and how those who really need shelter would not have a place, but for the organization. Now, sometime back we had a problem with bedbugs. Have we cured that problem or?
We don't have a problem with bedbugs at the Opportunity Center.
Have we ever had a problem with bedbugs?
I'll address that. I'm Jill Buckley, uh, Director, Executive Director at the Stupot. Uh, yes, this is a pretty common problem in all shelters and, um, we, um.
That's enough, Ms. Buck. Thank you for coming and acknowledging, cause people had to tell us. It's not like we there sleeping and, and know. So, but thank you for acknowledging that and by your knowledge, and then we know that if you need some help to clean that problem, cause sometimes you had to take those mats, throw them completely out and get new ones to fix this problem. But you letting the people know that you homeless, but we care about you. We not gonna just put you in some that we don't want our children or us to sleep in. That, that's enough. I'm voting on this item just because you're admitting what's happening.
Well, if I may, we have established a protocol for anytime we see even one bedbug and we have a really great partnership with, uh, with a company that helps us with extermination whenever we find it. So it's something we try to stay on top of because if we don't, it can get bad very quickly.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Hart, then, uh, Councilman.
You mentioned Broome Field. Is that normally 100% occupancy and the other 16 is spill over to your organization?
That's right.
Okay. So, so we still have a little wiggle room. It hadn't been as cold, but we still have a little bit of wiggle room with a few, few more folks being able to, to, uh.
That's right. And that's right. And if I may, our two outreach workers are here right now, Tommy Brown and LaRonda Davis. And one thing we do try to be especially during, um, during the cold weather is proactive in letting people we know who are staying in encampments or in places not meant for human habitation, that the Opportunity Center is available. A lot of people choose not to stay in shelters, but if they want to, they know who to contact, who to tell, and we can help them get there.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Hart, I mean, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the, and thanks for Stupot. The, uh, my question is, um, how many people do you expect to serve for Thanksgiving? And then the second question is, how many volunteers have, have reached out to y'all to help serve the people that come in during Thanksgiving?
So as of Friday afternoon, we had given out 1,000 holiday food baskets. So like with a turkey or a ham or chicken, with all the fixings for people to take home and prepare at their own homes. That is what we want to support the most is you gathering around your own table with friends and family uh, like everybody else does at Thanksgiving and what people want to do. We will be open though. We're open 365 days a year, so we'll be open for lunch. Thanksgiving tends to be a lighter crowd because we've just given out 1,000 holiday food baskets. And there's other food available around, uh, around the city too on that day. So we might have 100 people come to eat maximum on Thanksgiving Day. Um, our data show that we have about 300 volunteers come through each month. Some of those are the same, most of them are not. And so, um, I don't know, Councilman Foot, exactly how many people have reached out to serve on Thanksgiving. But, uh, but we have a full slate for this week. So, um, so we will need folks for the rest of the season. I think we got everybody we need for now. Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything you do. All right. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Council, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Vice President Lee.
I just want to say thank you for all that you do. Javonda, you know, I love you and thank you for all that you do on social media to let us know all the events you have going on. Um, that's how I'm aware and able to share. So thank you for all of your efforts.
All right. Councilman Hart.
Yeah, just a question. Do you feed on the weekends? Do you provide feeding?
Yes, we feed at noon on Saturday and at 1:00 on Sunday. Yes, we do.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And I look forward to meeting with you.
Yes, I look forward to it too. Thank you.
For other discussions. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Here another all in favor? Item carries your name. Sweet. Next item. Yes, sir.
I want to thank them for, it takes a special person to work with them.
Let's, let's get someone to, cause, cause the next item, the same thing.
Okay.
All right.
Order authorizing the contribution of matching funds to Stupot Community Services for the purpose of supporting social and community service programs and authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Stupot Community Service, Inc.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. It takes a special person to work with the needed, whether they homeless or, or they. It takes a special person to work with the needed, whether they homeless or, or they ears, because sometimes their attitudes is one that they feel that, uh, people are against them, world has done them wrong. And for someone to make them feel wanted and special, that's a special human being because it's easily a person can, can say, well, I got mine, you got to get yours. I don't care. But that same person that if you treat wrongly will commit suicide because they already feel that nobody care, nobody love them, nobody want them. So that's why, you know, I, I, I forget the pastor name that used to be over, uh, the whole organization, Reverend, what's his name?
Spencer.
Reverend Spencer. He, he taught me that because I, I just couldn't see it. He taught me we can all learn and I, I think this man may have a doctor degree or something, but he just cared about other human beings. And that's what you find. I'm not saying they're perfect because I don't want perfect is God and Jesus Christ. But they are as close that you can find and trying to help someone's who life is out of control and go in the wrong direction than anybody else you can find. They have a lot of understanding and they know when people going off on them, they don't go off on them back. And that's what makes it special. So I support it. I seen it firsthand, you know, again, it's, it's not perfect, but think about where would we be if we didn't have them at all with the number of people we got in these streets? Look at them cities like New Orleans and Los Angeles and other places.
Atlanta.
You know? Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Councilman Hartley because he taught me a lot over the weeks and months about a lot of this situation with homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hartley?
Yeah, um, um, Mr. President, thank you and thank you, uh, my colleague, Councilman Stokes. But one thing, and I have volunteered at one of these shelters, it's, uh, it's, it's really moving and it's really humbling. And I would encourage anyone to reach out, what you have a website and volun, can they volunteer on the website? So you can reach out to Stupot on their website looking Thanksgiving is coming up. If you haven't volunteered, if you want to really truly be thankful, uh, be that by giving back, uh, to others and, uh, it's very fulfilling. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here another all in favor. All right. Item carries unanimously. Uh, next item.
Order authorizing payment in the amount of $840 to Moody Management of Mississippi LLC to provide 12 employees with CPR, first aid and automatic external defibrillator training at Department of Human and Cultural Services.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and property second. Any questions or comments? I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman Lee. Thank you all for coming so much. Councilwoman Lee.
Uh, Dr. Scott.
Dr. Scott. Dr. Scott.
Come on.
In this order, you mentioned, um, defibrillator training. Are there defibrillators at every, uh, center?
Usually, uh, Sean Moody brings the defibrillators with him and he shows staff.
So it's portable?
Pardon?
So like at the Tubaloo, uh...
No, there's not a defibrillator at the centers, at any of the centers. The instructor brings them with him so he can demonstrate to staff so they'll be aware of it.
But then there's no defibrillator at the center?
There's no defibrillators at the centers.
So what do you, why do you need to be trained on it if?
He includes that with the training for CPR and first aid.
Okay. Dr. Scott, are we looking at getting defibrillators at all of our centers?
Just, I, 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 go ahead, Councilman Hartley.
Just wanted to, I mean, before we step into that, I'm sure we need to legal to weigh in on, on the parameters of use. I'm, I'm not asking for comment now. All I'm saying is, uh, before we step into getting that, and I don't know if there's a official request coming from this council, but before we need to examine all the medical and, uh, legal ramifications surrounding it. But so, but that's just a part of the training.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so this is costing, how much for the total training?
It's 840.
840?
Yes.
And there's nobody to offer CPR training for free?
Well, the fire department does, but our certifications are due every two years and December is the month in which we have to be recertified per the standards.
And there's no one that would recertify for no, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to see.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
First aid and CPR.
All right.
Yes. For recertification in December.
So we must get, they have to go off.
Did anybody check with?
Do it in-house.
Did anybody check with American Red?
The fire department said they weren't going to be able to do it until April.
Didn't anybody check with American Red Cards or any of the...
They charge as well.
They charge as well?
Yes.
And, and so then I guess my other question goes back to this, just to be clear. If we're doing defibrillator training and if our senior citizens are going to have seniors there, then it makes sense to have the investment of defibrillators, correct?
Yes, that would be a good investment. We just had a limited budget, but that's something we can check into.
I would like to refer several companies and they, you can rent them and maintenance is included. So I'll, I'll get with you, Dr. Scott.
Okay. Council, Councilman Griselle.
I have a question just for clarity. What reason did the fire department give for not being able to do the training?
I guess they schedule their trainings at various times during the year. Uh, actually they send out flyers. There's always an email when they have it. But again, our certifications are due in December and per the quality assurance standards for such a Mississippi playing in development district, we have to be certified.
I understand that. I, I get certified every year.
And ours is for two years.
But I, I'm just still questioning why the fire department wouldn't support an in-house shop with its certification needs.
Well, I guess that's something we'd have to discuss with them to see if they can arrange...
Is someone from the fire department here?
Councilman Griselle.
Yes.
Yes. I, I just happened to be looking at the agenda, uh, yesterday or day before yesterday and I saw where they were paying this company, that type of money to certify these people. And I called Dr. Scott and told her that we were able to certify these people in first aid, uh, AEDs and, and, uh, uh, whatever they needed for us to certify them. I mean, we, we were able to do that in-house. Uh, and it's only going to cost them what it would cost the school. It would be a lot less than what that 800 some dollars is. And so we're able to do that. Now, I don't know how much time they have now for us to be able to do that this time around, but the next time, I'm almost certain, well, I'm, I am certain that we'll be able to certify them without a problem.
Chief Owens, they have a December deadline.
Yeah.
You all can't help them meet that December deadline?
I'm not sure.
My, my training is roughly an hour, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. But all this, the information has to go in and they have to get their cards back at a certain time, so I'm, I'm, I'm not sure about that. If it's confusion, is the, uh, card, I mean, the information has to be sent out to a school to be processed and then that information comes back. We don't do the certification, the, if we do the training, uh, the certification is actually coming from, uh, most of the time it's home community college.
Our certification comes through Hines.
Yeah.
And we have used the fire department for many years and then we were instructed not to use them because we could not pay a city entity. So they stopped us from using the fire department.
I'm, I'm sorry. State, state your name for the record.
I'm Dr. Taylor with Senior Service here at the Service.
Y'all get it? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, so, so, so two things. One, I always try to identify saves. I, that's what I hear. But two, if, if, if they're going to be trained on defibrillators, then you should have so.
Okay.
So I, that's it. All right. Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, Councilman Griselle, will you finish with your follow-up? Go ahead.
I'm finished. I'm just really confused in terms of you have an in-house organization not supporting another in-house organization. That's my only issue. And I heard one of the attorneys say it's just 840 dollars, but I'm standing on principle because at some point one shop got to support the other shop even if it's $10. And we know they have a deadline and you all have the capability to do it, but you're not going to help them get it done. That's my problem. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, uh, I think that in the future, uh, the fire department and Human and Cultural Service will work this out. I think right now they just have a position where time is of the essence, having this, having to be done by December, we, uh, be in December next week. But I think all divisions can work together and make sure that this won't be an issue in the, in the future. Now, my only other concern is what these council members brought up, you know, you got to have some defibrillators, especially you've got senior citizens and you don't want someone to need aid and you don't have the proper equipment, you know? So somewhere down the line, we need to find a way to get some defibrillators because when your life is on the line, that sacking is the difference between life and death. So, you know, I think of what you're doing. I just think that we, we got to make sure we get some defibrillators, number one, and we got to work with the fire department and others in a timely manner, uh, to make sure that we all are one city of Jackson. Thank you.
And we will check on the cost of the defibrillators.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. So listen, uh, my, my colleague, uh, Ms. Griselle did bring up some great points and I, I know that, um, that, that sometimes when we're looking at the prices saying, hey, it's only this, but sometimes the lack of communications or timely communications, we see it happen throughout the whole city, uh, which, which, which has caused some of the things that we see happen. And so, uh, colleagues, I think that, you know, they do need this certification at this point, uh, and, and I do understand sometimes we like to send a message, uh, but I, I, I think it has been heard. So at this point, all in favor. Oppose? All right. Six, one. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute 10 commercial services agreements with integrated pest control maintenance to provide pest control services at 10 facilities managed by the Department of Human Cultural Services and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed $5,064.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here another all in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Question. Councilman Griselle? Oh. We good? All right. All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying past, past services performed and approving payment to Hart Media Plus Entertainment, Inc. for providing radio advertising services for the Jackson Zoo Blue Bell Ice Cream Safari. Said advertising spots ran on local radio stations from July 11, 2023 to July 22, 2023 in the amount of $2,000.
So move. Second. It's, it's been moved and property second. Look, this, this is all good. I, 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 I guess my concern is why are we always getting these ratifications after the event? I, I, I think it would help us to understand and to know what the cost is and what the investment is before the event so that we can know. It, it, it becomes very hard and it becomes an issue with trust when after an event is performed, we get these ratifications and invoices. Because that, because, you know, and I'm not saying, but it could be several more come from WABT, WJTV, that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars that we knew nothing about. And so, um, you know, i- if in the future, let's try to get these to us before these events take place. Councilwoman Lee.
I do want to commend you on how well this was advertised because it was well attended and I saw how many spots on the radio were purchased. So I, I like to see that. That, that shows me that a lot of effort and time was put into this and I think we need to model that with a lot of our other events. So it was well advertised.
Thank you, Madam Vice.
It was well advertised, but get us the invoices and let us know what it's going to cost before you do it. Go ahead, Councilman Hartley.
Yeah, and I was going to follow up on that. Was there a reason why we're getting afterwards?
The invoice was, uh, received late.
Okay.
And it was part of the other payments that needed to be paid.
Okay.
That was caught, bundled in the system, so we're just getting around and getting it taken care of.
Received late from?
Yes, sir.
Defender. Okay. Uh, and my other thing is, look, thanks so much for that blue and, uh, boo at the zoo.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I took a picture with a bunch of kids, had those scary masks on and a knife to my neck. I don't know what it was all about, but I took a bunch of pictures with them. It was great. Uh, folks from every age, age range was there. And then the zuchilla, uh, last Saturday.
Yes, sir.
That was amazing. Uh, man, and, and, and hopefully you all would do it on a regular basis, uh, so it can just pick up more and more folks coming out. But that was amazing. That was nice.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Food, you know, the, everything, the vendors for sale, the music, just everything. Kids had play, uh, areas to play. It was just amazing. So thanks for, uh, bringing all that stuff, um, uh, to, uh, to fruition. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, sir. And we want to thank the hardworking zoo staff for the cleanliness and the preparation and constituents and everyone that played a part. We want to publicly thank them as well, our hardworking employees.
And congratulations to you as well.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, all in favor?
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right. Item carries six, one. Next item.
Order ratifying past services performed and approving payment to Gulf State Golf Carts LLC for repair work and maintenance to golf carts at the Pete Brown Golf Facility in the amount of $603.60.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All right. Here another all in favor.
Abstain, Mr. President.
The, item passes six, one. Next item.
Order requesting approval of future services from and payments to Four Seasons Enterprises, LLC to provide vegetation underbrush and fencing removal from a damaged bird exhibit at the Jackson Zoo that was damaged by fallen trees during severe storms in June and July 2023.
So move. Second. It's been moved and property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right. All right, item passes six, one. Next item.
Order requesting approval of future services from and payments to Efficient Power and Light LLC for provision of mechanic services for specialized golf course equipment.
So move.
Second.
Let's remove a property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor?
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right, item passes six with one abstention. Next item.
Order declaring parcel number parcel numbers 437-2-1 and 437-3 surplus property and authorizing the mayor to execute the sale contract deed of conveyance and other documents necessary to say to sell said property to James Covington.
So move.
Second, I I do want some questions.
All right, let's remove a property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Lee.
Ms. Dotson, can you just give me some background on this?
Chloe Dotson, Director of Planning. So this is a acquisition of said property through our surplus property approval process. So we, as we discussed yesterday during work session, people can apply for surplus property. The committee voted to allow the sale to James Covington and now this order is here presented to council for a review and approval.
Okay, and.
I mean, that'll follow up. Go ahead. Councilwoman Lee.
Were we ever given that list of surplus property?
Long time ago.
I can I can provide that. Did we did we request that for me? I'm sorry if I if I didn't.
No, you you weren't the director at the time that was requested.
Okay.
It was a long time ago, not an updated one.
We have a full list of surplus property. We have a map. I can give that to you, no problem.
Is it easily easy to read?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So the map correlates with the Excel spreadsheet. So you can look at the parcels, compare them on the map.
And who can apply to purchase surplus property?
I mean, it's open to the the general public.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilman Foot, then to you, Councilman Hardley.
Thank you. So the the sales price here is $70,199 and 99 cents. Where does that money go?
Goes into the general fund.
It goes into the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a way we can find out, like say over the course of a year, how much money was generated by?
Absolutely. That's usually included in my end of the year budget presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hardley.
Yes, and I echo my my colleague's sentiment. I think we need to copy of that list of surplus properties. One of my concerns is that we need to get it out to a large number of people so we could have different folks bidding on it. Okay? And if this one of these properties is next to my house, then I would probably want first divs have bidden on it. How many properties are included in this particular bid?
Looks like there are two.
Two properties? I thought it was.
I'm looking at parcel numbers. I'm looking at two parcel numbers.
Oh, okay, okay. Maybe there's another one that's coming up.
The appraisal is what you're referring to.
Okay, yes, yeah, yes. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Councilman Lee asked, was it in my ward? I I don't know. What is it?
Old warehouse, ain't it? I thought that was Ward three.
That's what I'm asking.
There's two warehouses, ain't it? It's like an old warehouse.
What what is it and where is it?
On Manhattan at Northside.
I would have to look into the agenda. The the board package provided should have all of the the information in there. I don't have it offhand.
We don't have anything.
All right, Council, Councilman Foot, did you still? You had anything else?
Questions on this note?
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Is she trying to? Is she going to find it out what we what we dealing with? Because I don't see any property next to Chastain.
Do do we do we need to hold this before we vote? Okay.
Um, do they want the legal description or you want?
Yeah, the legal description.
The physical address.
Know where it is.
What is it?
See what ward it's in.
There's an old school there or something.
That's the Tisdale Library?
Is that what it is?
That's Ward one.
That's Ward one?
So this is the Tisdale Library property?
Oh, wow.
He had demolished the Tisdale Library. This is the remaining property at that location, which is now vacant.
That's what the notice says, you're right. If you look at the notice of invitation to bid on city-owned property, it has old Tisdale Library in parentheses.
Really?
That's in the packet.
Any other questions or comments?
Wow.
Here none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Oppose?
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right, item carries six with one abstention. Next, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for home funds through the Department of Planning and Development between the City of Jackson and GCHP Midtown LP.
So move.
Let's remove a property second on this item. Are there any questions or comments? Let let me just say this because and I'm going to use this item, just say this on behalf of my colleagues. If we could get these surplus properties to our colleagues as soon as possible or get them to us as soon because you want community people and neighborhood associations to be able to have some type of input or awareness on these properties, you know, then on the back end. Because if someone says, well, we don't know what he's doing, you know, and then it ends up something that could be a fight and zoning. But so to try to prevent that, to walk these things with our community organizations as much as possible. Councilwoman Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. This is real, I'm back to the item at hand and.
Thank you for bringing me back, Senator.
No, that's okay. Ms. Evans is here and I have a question for her, if you would please allow it. She's she is with she is with the 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 foundation from New Orleans. Yes, I just if you if you could come to the podium, Ms. Evans, and and state your name, of course, you know, state your name for the record.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Mary Elizabeth Evans. I'm with Gulf Coast Housing Partnership.
Thank you. I I'm very excited about this project in Midtown and I know y'all have been all collectively working together, planning for a long time. When do you anticipate this project actually getting under construction?
We expect it to start construction within the next 30 to 45 days.
Wow, okay.
This is one of our final, y'all's approval is one of our final, probably four things we're working on prior to our final closing. We have all of our funds committed, our contractor in place, and so we're waiting on a few final approvals and we'll be starting construction end of this year or beginning or beginning of January. It's a 12-month construction schedule and it's 27 units of affordable housing. And I just want to recognize Kristi Hendricks with Midtown Partners, who's our partner organization and has done a lot of work to work to assemble the properties that are part of this development in partnership with the city. Some of them were donated through the surplus properties program, actually, a few years ago that are ending up being developed as part of this development.
Well, and thank you for being here, Dr. Hendricks. I didn't see you, I'm sorry. And thank you, Ms. Dotson, for all the work that y'all have done, so.
Question before you leave. May I have ask just one more question? First of all, thank you for all the work you're doing with the Pearl over on Highway 80 and working. My my other comment is the the invol- the involvement with the neighborhood associations. Have they been in lockstep with the developing development of this project?
Absolutely. So Kristi, I'm sure, can talk more about this, but this project specifically grew out of neighborhood, a neighborhood plan that was done over a period of a couple of years and the Neighborhood Association has been involved. We we actually came in as a nonprofit developer that partners with the neighborhood to help make their vision a reality.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you so much. Many years ago, Mr. President, I went to Holy Ghost Catholic Church and this is this is the area surrounding Holy Ghost. But most people remember this area for kind of like George Harris because this is where he lived and his home is one of the last homes left in that area that Noel Bay or Mill Street area. I rode in there looking at Rowan Miller School and Brown and I see all the signs. My main concern is the displacement of the older people who've been in that area all these years. And I know that some of the houses are abandoned and some of them are, the people are gone. And I know there's some work supposed to take place at the old New Deal. Most people still call it the New Deal Properties down the street from there. What relationship have y'all created with Holy Ghost Catholic Church since it's the most stable element in that area now?
So we as the we as the developer don't know Holy Ghost Catholic Church. I don't know, Midtown Partners is the neighborhood organization, so they can speak to any partnership with them.
Good morning. I'm Kristi Hendricks, the Executive Director of Midtown Partners. And we have been located in the neighborhood 30 years, actually this year. So we are the nonprofit that provides the comprehensive services. We work very close with Holy Ghost. So there are a number of other partners and major stakeholders that we work closely with along with the Neighborhood Association. So this is a project that we was identified in the master plan, the Midtown Master Plan that was conducted back in 2009, which really focused on infill housing development in that south area of the neighborhood. Noel Street and Bell Street is is has been in really bad condition. We participated with the city on the blight elimination program and we did a little over $100,000 worth of acquisition demolition in getting this project ready for development. So we have worked very closely with with the churches and they're excited to to see this development as with our senior citizens that, you know, live in that area. We've had a considerable amount of crime issues in that area and this infill housing development, affordable housing development will help to address that. So they've been actively participating in this and are anxious to see this start.
The reason I ask is because that church has been over there a long, long time and to try to preserve the dignity of that area, I remember what the area used to look like and I know how the area was. Now you got abandoned schools, which creating other issues and I know we need affordable housing, but we do not need anything that's going to destroy the character of that neighborhood. Holy Ghost was one of the first black Catholic schools and churches. And if the wrong element move into that area, and I know some people have died and and a lot of abandoned property in that area, can't let George die. But if your development is not something positive, we'll lose that area forever. There's a lot of historical people and things in that area, even though some of them might look rundown. But the corner, family members had one of the most successful businesses in the City of Jackson. Grishams had a had a had a eatery there for many, many years, the Grishams and the Grishams family. So I just want to make sure as I go in those neighborhoods and talk to the people that everyone's on the same page in terms of development. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee.
I I just wanted to also ask how you were going to address crime because I know I know that area well. I know some of the the priest that was there was robbed and now he no longer lives there and lives at another church in my ward. So that's concerning to me. Do y'all have a plan to address crime for your new construction?
We do. And, you know, the first step was taking down the dilapidated properties that had been vacant for a number of years on Noel. And so once we were able to take that down and create a green space until we could get this partnership up and going for the development, that helped. But we do have a number of senior citizens that have been terrified, you know, down in that area because of crime. So we've been working closely with Capitol Police as well as JPD. The Neighborhood Association has been meeting on a regular basis with JPD and Capitol Police in addressing that area. So we believe once we're able to put this housing, more eyes on the street, more active residents in that area, it's going to help deter crime and address some of the issues that we've been we've been discussing. Having the vacant property down there has been a huge issue and especially Councilman Stokes, you mentioned Brown and Rowan.
Yes.
And that's 80,000 square feet of vacant space that, you know, we've been trying to deal with as a neighborhood and working with the Neighborhood Association.
Right, I was going to also address those two schools. I know it's it's, you know, a haven for the homeless and a lot of crime is happening within that building. They've come in and occupied that building. So just wondering, are you working with JPS to try to do something with that? Or maybe this is some major issues, but I wish you luck. I mean, what you're doing is noble. It's much needed. I'm just worried about the element that is already there and how it would deter the future of your project.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, thank you. I I your organization has a very strong track record of being incredibly sensitive to the surrounding area and the architectural design and maintaining the the character. And I know the foundation does as well. You're doing a good bit of work in Berry Street District as well in adhering to all of the historic district guidelines. But colleagues, just so you know, I I'm going to say this out loud. This organization tried to buy the schools and JPS would not sell them to them. So that is where we are on that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I guess I want to try to make it as plainly clear as I can. You have some very, very good people over in that Mill Street area. I'm hoping that we can transition some of the people at the New Deal area that eventually someone's going to tear down, redevelop over to this area. I'm not saying all because 100% are not great people, 99.9% are great people. And they love that area of town and they will enhance that area of town. They're not going to break into church. And that's what we're concerned about. You know, with the criminal activity that's taking place on there now, those are not people who were born and raised over there. A lot of them coming off those trains because you're so close to the train and I'm not going to call any kind of names for people riding the train, get off the train and come into and abandon the building and do things to destroy a community. But that church deserves to have good wholesome people near it. They worship God and that church has been there for many, many generations. A lot of people went to school there who are successful today. A lot of people went to church there. So we just want to make sure you develop it with putting God first. Let me say it that way. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here none, all in favor? All right, item carries, your name, speak. Next item.
Order authorizing the revising of Department of Planning and Development's fiscal year 2024 budget to revise and reallocate funds across categories from program years 2019 and 2020 home investment partnership grant funds.
So move. Let's remove a property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor? Oppose? I mean, you oppose abstention?
No, no, I'm going to go with.
You're going with the in favor unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract to operations, a down payment assistance program for home ownership through the Department of Planning and Development between the City of Jackson and Hope Credit Union Enterprise Corporation.
So move.
Second. Let's remove a property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Do we currently have this partnership working or do we have any homes that we have worked with Hope to make sure we had people to buy some homes? Is this brand new? What's the status? Do we have areas we looking at trying to put homeowners in or what?
Yes, Councilman Stokes. Chloe Dotson, Director of Planning, very excited about this program. It's a new, brand new program between the City of Jackson partnering with Hope Federal Credit Union. And so what we've seen is that there's more renters in the City of Jackson than homeowners. And what we're trying to do right now is push as many resources that we can as possible to build generational wealth through homeownership. And so partnering with Hope, and I have Alex here to speak on behalf of Hope, partnering with them, we're going to put in about $1 million and they're going to leverage it with $10.8 million in mortgages. We hope to provide homeownership to at least 60 to 100 families over the next year. Hope has the capacity to do that. They run down payment assistance programs throughout the South and we hope that through their leverage that we can maximize the opportunity, provide homeownership opportunities for the average family in the City of Jackson.
In particular neighborhoods?
Citywide.
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 I keep hearing citywide, but I don't see a whole lot of excitement or movement in certain neighborhoods, especially the older neighborhoods versus some of the neighborhoods that already don't really need Hope or the city help.
Understood. One thing I will say is that there are income limits. So, you know, areas that see a lot of investment that have higher incomes won't see this this program within their communities. It would be, this program is built for low to moderate income families. So it's the average family making 50, 60, 70,000 a year, family of four, which are concentrated in in several wards. And so if you read between the lines, you know, if we're focusing on low to moderate income, that is going to be very specific to different communities throughout the city. But because it's federal funds, we can't say that we're, you know, cherry picking.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. That's fine.
All right, yes, Councilman Hardley.
Yes, I'd like to hear from Hope just for a moment and the scope of what you're looking at and the type homes that you're willing to provide loans for. And again, could you repeat that income range? Can you repeat the income range?
Yeah. So I have, hold on. So the the income ranges are going to be based on your 80% AMI and below. The price is not to exceed $250,000. So you're looking at. So you're looking at, you're looking at affordable housing price points for homeownership. And that's because it's tied to home funding. So that's your federal allocation. So it can only go to low to moderate income families. Self-price can't exceed 250,000. And then your, your income limits are based on 80% AMI and below.
Okay. And one other question, Mr. Hudson. What type of homes? Would they be able to build new homes? Or how does that work?
Yeah, and Alex can probably talk to that. So there's a wide variety that you can buy homes, you can build homes. There's several different types of financing. The best thing about this deal is that they're leveraging many different opportunities. So Hope partners with Mississippi Home Corporation. So there's other down payment assistance programs that can be leveraged with our program. Just to give you an idea, if someone was to buy a house at $180,000, right? Whether that's new construction, or if they're just buying a house, we can supplement over the course of their mortgage about $46,000. So we're subsidizing in order to make homeownership available and affordable.
Thank you.
Alex Lawson, Senior Vice President at Hope Credit Union and Hope Enterprise.
Just brief it down.
Yep. So she's correct in that there are a wide range of things you can use these funds for. We have to stick to the federal guidelines for what we put into the document here. But what we've found is that on average, our average home price is around 120,000 in this area. And we target folks and get most people who fit and who are exploring homes in those particular parts of the community. In the packet, we highlighted that 92% of our home buyers were people of color. More than 86% were first-time home buyers. 57% were female-headed households. So those are the types that typically come to us because the product that we offer, which allows a credit score as low as 580, no private mortgage insurance. And then we, like she mentioned, we stack down payment assistance program on top of one another. So we've seen someone get as much as $40,000 in down payment assistance by leveraging the different programs. And that, in and of itself, targets the communities that you guys are discussing.
One follow-up. Do you have a package or something you can present to council that will help, that we can disseminate among our constituents?
Absolutely.
Can't, so I can expect that from you?
If the agenda item is approved today, we will work together on our marketing campaign so that we can give that to council for you to release it to your general public.
And please, you might just include that in the briefings at COPS meetings and Neighborhood Association meetings.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Oh, council, I do have an amendment on the floor if possible. Their name, it needs to delete Credit Union. It just needs to be Hope Enterprise Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed property sector. Make sure that the clerk gets the direct restructuring amendment. All in favor of the amendment? All right, amendment passes. Now we have the item on floors. Amendment, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. Ms. Dotson, I just want to start off by saying, thank you. This Hope and their standalone method of doing thing has been such a success story, helping, helping so many needy people. And I hear so many times people talking about how it was started in the basement of Anderson Church and, and look how big it is today. But it really helps a whole lot of people who need that special consideration. There's a whole lot of people who will pay a mortgage, who just need the opportunity to pay. And I'm just hoping that once we start getting these homes approved, that the people don't get it and move out within a short period of time. We want to make sure we stabilize some neighborhoods and keep them stable for generations. So I support this item. I think it's good. I was joking with Councilmember Lee about low income, $250,000. I don't know when that became low income, but.
The max, maximum.
I was just joking because he is, he told her we dealing with federal statistics that we got to follow the guidelines.
You gotta follow the guideline.
Hey, nothing to be said. We must, what? Follow the guideline. Thank you.
On paper. And I also note that there is a clause in here that speaks to what you talked about, people buying and leaving. It's a forgivable loan, which means if you do move out before five years, then it calls back, it prorates the grant.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This is good. All in favor? All right, item carries, now, see, colleagues, this is the eve of the eve of Thanksgiving.
All right.
And I know there are a lot of employees that are going to try to have some Thanksgiving fellowship and, you know, and all this other kind of stuff, and just enjoy. So if we can't try to move this alone.
I hold a quite a few items.
Thank you. Yeah, just try to move this alone because, you know, some of the city staff looking, Dr. Omar looking like, we hungry?
Right.
Look at that, we hungry?
Let's go eat, though.
So let's try to move this out, all right? All right, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number four and related documents to the agreement with Kinetix Transportation Group to complete and implement the bus, bus network plan for the Jackson Public Transportation System, J-Trans.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed property sector on the side. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item passes unanimously. Why didn't you tell me to do that earlier?
We told you two hours ago.
Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the event license agreement with the Capital City Convention Center Commission to host the city of Jackson's Doing Business with Jackson City Information and Networking Reception on December 7, 2023, and authorizing payment in the amount of $6,226.80.
So.
Second.
It's removed property sector. Colleagues, we had a good conversation about this committee to get understanding. I think that we are at a good place now. All in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries six-one. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for KMG Films for the 13th Annual Doing Business with the City.
So.
Second.
It's removed property sector on the side. Any questions or comments? Here and another, all in favor?
Epstein, Mr. President.
All right, item passes six-one. Abstention. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for We Marquee LLC to rent and install marquee letters at the 13th Annual Doing Business with the Cities.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed property sector on the side. Any questions or comments? Here and another, all in favor?
Epstein, Mr. President.
All right, item passes six-one. Abstention. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for the Experience Pro Sound and Lighting for the 13th Annual Doing Business with the City.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed property second with this item. Any questions or comments? Here and another, all in favor?
Epstein.
All right, item passes six-one. Abstention. Next item.
Order authorizing payments to Coldwell Banker Richard Ellis and Insight Valuations to conduct appraisal services for the city of Jackson-owned land that was declared surplus property by the surplus property committee.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed property sector on the side. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Location of the property, Ms. Dotson?
Fair Street.
This is in the Fair Street Historic District.
Can you explain this project to us, please?
The applicant submitted an application for several properties, properties within the Fair Street Historic District. He intends to invest and finance redevelopment of the property that meets historic, historical guidelines. And so we are in support of the project as it meets the comprehensive plan for Fair Street neighborhood.
Now, is this part of that two-block redevelopment area of Fair Street or is?
No, it's a little north. It's further north, northeast.
Does it cross the Monument Street side? I guess I'm trying to get a picture where we at.
Says, is it Church Street? Where is it? Okay, Church Bloom, I see Church and Bloom Street.
Okay, I'm sorry. Robert, Robert serves on the surplus property committee and remembers things like streets better than I. This is over by Smith Wills and High Street, Smith Robinson and, and High Street. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Church Street, Bloom.
Yes, Church Street. Yes, yes.
That we own, that the city own.
Yes. And what's so special about this is that this is city-owned property, and he actually maintained it for a very, very long time.
Yeah.
And so he's very excited about this proposal to do a mixed-use residential, commercial district. And it seems that he has a good track record of making it happen. So we're very excited to support this project. Very similar process that Midtown went through for the Midtown Housing Project that they're working on now.
All right. Can you finish?
Yeah, she's, she's good.
All right. Councilman Harley?
Yes. One of my concerns, and I think I voiced this yesterday, is that when someone comes in and buy a large tract of land that belongs to the city for a purpose, it, to me, it just seems as though that should, that should come before city council and, and just letting us know that, okay, we have 23 city properties that's going to be sold to one entity. Okay? And so I, again, I bring up the question about community involvement and, and everything's involved. I appreciate, he was, you said he was cleaning up all 23 of these proj, projects?
He maintained the property in that area. He maintained the property. I would like to know that this is just authorizing appraisal.
I understand.
You still have to go through, it goes through city council twice.
Okay. And I understand that, and to me, I, I agree that we get an appraisal, but when individuals and companies start buying up large tracts of city surplus property, I kind of want a little bit more information on it. So again, I'm in support of an appraisal.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
I just wanted to see where Councilwoman Lindsay was on this.
I support it.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, one, one final question. Ms. Dotson, it is a good project, and we believe it's a good project, and we know something need to happen. You know, Dr. Powell owned over in that area years and years ago. But the concern is, what's going to really take place? We don't want to approve something that's going to bite us later because people are going to feel that it's not a good fit for Fair Street, even though we know something need to happen. And we trusting you to lead us the right direction with this situation. It's a lot of property to change hands from the city of Jackson to one person going to own it all, it's going to be a corporation.
Excuse me, one, one entity.
And did he tell you what his plans are to, in terms of development?
So I would like to say that since I've been the Director of Planning, I've been very adamant about projects meeting historical Fair Street guidelines. For example, you have a historic tax credit deal, which is a single-family rehab that we took through all of our processes. There's not just one process. There are many, many hoops to jump through in order to get to a final result. They would have to go through Historic Preservation Board. They would have to have community meetings. This is just an appraisal of the property to see if we are even willing to sell it at that price.
How many properties is it total?
I believe we said 27?
23.
23? Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. And I do, there are mechanisms set in place to ensure that not only the community is involved, but the historical guidelines that are set and adopted by council are also followed.
Well, I guess we, we realize things can't stay the same. It can't just look like it's looking and been looking for the last forever. It's got to be some improvement.
Yeah.
And this might be the step to improvement, but you know, you're just a little leery when you're talking about somebody doing something in Fair Street.
I understand.
Because of the, the history of Fair Street.
I understand.
Thank you so much.
All right. Councilwoman Lee?
I understand that this is just an appraisal. Once it gets to the point where it will be sold, will the owners and stakeholders on that street get to know what's going to happen and weigh in on that because we are part of Fair Street and we want to know what would be happening and how it would affect our business.
So as far as the sale, we try to get the applicant to communicate with the community prior to even starting this process. But again, so when it gets to the sell part, that's not necessarily, you know, thrown out to the public. We hope that they engage with the public. But the big, the big thing is that when they start to talk about development, there's a lot of loopholes that they must go through that force them to engage with the community.
Now, I see on here Mark Rowe. Do you, is that Mark and Tasha Rowe?
I don't know about Tasha, but his last name is Rowe.
Okay.
Thank you. I like, I love them.
Yes, Ms. Chloe. And I appreciate the outreach effort. But understand this, earlier this year, I voted on something with city surplus property being given to, and one, to an entity. And again, when we, I'd just like to know or reinforce the fact that we need to be aware when we giving away city property, especially en masse, of the intention. And we need to get that information upfront. And I, I will support this appraisal because it's, to me, it's the right thing to do. But in general, when we're talking about taking city-owned property, it belongs to the people, and just giving it to, to an entity without this, the, the community involvement in that process, I think we need to back up. And I will be questioning, I will be looking for blocks of city properties that's being given away and asking those questions, who, what, when, where, what for, and the impact on the community. But that's just a thought of mine, and that's the reason I bring it up. I am full support of this appraisal. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
I just want to reiterate that we need a copy of the surplus property in the city because stakeholders on this street would have loved the opportunity to, to also be able to purchase these properties. We have Akisha Holly. We have funeral homes on this street that I know are interested. So please give us that list.
Yeah, it's, Ms. Hoover, if you're on the line, please send the link. It's on the website. It's very easy to access.
Any, any more questions or comments? Here and the other, all in favor? All right, item passes unanimously. Colleagues, and just need to verify this with legal and the Department of Planning? It looks like we have a duplicate. I just need to verify? With 28 and 47? So that's a duplicate? Okay. So. So with, with this being published, do we just say remove, are we striking due to it being a duplicate?
Either or. So I think what happened is that the clerk added this back to the agenda based on the meeting from yesterday.
Yes.
But then it also was added from, when she added the other one, she also added it. So there's a revision to one of the ones from yesterday, but it's not this one.
So, whoa, whoa, whoa. Do we need to resend the previous action to take up the one with the new, or is it the both the same?
It's not this item. It's item 49 that she's referring to.
Yeah.
Okay, 49 has the revision. Okay.
And it's already listed as it was amended in committee.
So we could strike 47?
Yes.
Because that is a straight duplicate. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure we're moving on. All right. So we are now on 33. All right. Thank you, City Attorney's Office. 33?
Order authorizing final payment to the contract of Hemfield Construction Company, Inc., for sanitary sewer lateral repair work at 350 Meadowbrook Road, and authorizing publication of notice of completion.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed property sector on the side. Any questions or comments? Here and another, all in favor? Oppose?
Epstein, Mr. President.
All right. Item carries six-one abstention. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one to the contract of PaveCon LTD for construction of the Fast Act Sidewalk Project, Federal Aid Project Number STP-0250-00054, LPA-108164.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lee, uh, is this part of the, uh, the, uh, contract where the city was being here live of, uh, not providing handicap accessible sidewalks?
Robert Lee Public Works, no. So, what we did, kind of a quick history since we're on the clock, we applied for TA funds for several streets where we done paving work in the past, but sidewalk work hadn't been done, not in trouble with the feds or anything like that, and we were awarded about a million dollars, give or take a little bit, for these streets, including right out front here at President's Street. What this change order does is actually is very simple. It adds a J-tran bench to the bus stop in front of the old Barn Hills on Cat Line Road. As part of our application, the NPO, we included in that a bench for that bus stop, which is, gives us points on the application, and since we promised we was going to do it, we, we need to do, we need to do it. It was inadvertently admitted from the plans and pay item list.
Uh, the only thing we still did not address, some of these, you know, city neighborhoods where people sitting on the ground, there's no, no benches for them to sit on, uh, at these bus stops, and a lot of time the buses are running late, ladies have on dresses, it, it's just insanity. I thought about even starting the program, we just put chairs at the bus stops so people have somewhere to sit, whereas it's sitting on the ground.
I'll, I'll have to defer to Chloe on that. They usually, for ninety-nine point nine percent of the bus stop improvements comes out of the planning department and J-tran, like the bus stop, uh, project that was recently wrapped up two weeks ago. This bus stop bench, we promised it, it was in previous bench there, it got removed for some reason, and we put it in the application, and we're going to put it in as promised.
What about the promises for sidewalks on Woodrow Wilson?
On Woodrow Wilson, those will be done as part of the paving project, uh, once we get the green light to advertise from MMLK to the Mill Street Bridge, that includes sidewalk to get our sidewalk connection from MMLK to, uh, the end of Mill Street Bridge.
Okay, but there was some discussion to have sidewalks all the way up to a fortification, which would include the golf course?
I, yeah, I'm drawing a blank on that one.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Lee?
Off topic, but piggybacking off of what he said, uh, earlier, maybe about two years ago, we were able to get sidewalks approved for my Callaway feeder pattern through the one percent sales tax. Do you know where we are with that? And will that help me get a covered bus stop right there as well?
Let me follow up on that one.
Thank you.
Let, let, let me say this, get that Callaway sidewalk before that Forest Hill sidewalk? We gonna, I ain't gonna say.
It was approved by the one percent sales tax.
So, it was ours.
Yeah, let me follow up on that one.
Councilman Harley?
Yes, Ms. Lee, and, uh, thank you for the things you're doing. I got two little quick questions for you. One is, I recently met with someone, I can't remember the organization, but they were pro sidewalks, pro walking, and they offer grant opportunities, uh, to, to provide more sidewalks within the, uh, uh, City of Jackson. Uh, I think they were coupled maybe even with the Health Department. I think it was, it was two.
The American Car Foundation.
Okay.
The Police Streets.
Right. Have we explored opportunities to get grant funding through them for, for free sidewalks?
We have to pass the ordinance first. I, I have the mechanism in my office.
It's still in committee.
Okay, okay.
So, we, yes, we pass the ordinance.
That's probably something we need to discuss fully in committee because that's come around at least three times in the last few years, and there's pros and cons.
Okay, and that was one of my questions, but I'm glad that, um, we're, we're on top of that. The second thing is Capitol Street update sidewalks, poles in the streets, ADA compliance, yada, yada, yada.
We're, we're working with energy on that, that's the big thing, particularly west of.
Any, any particular deadlines or timelines on that?
No.
All right, any, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All in favor? Item carries, all.
Epstein, Ms. President.
All right, six and one extension, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two to the contract of Hemfield Construction Company, Inc., for construction of the Riverside Drive project.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? They want it bad. Are there any, are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? No, all right, item carries six. Six, what? Next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to terminate a construction engineering and inspection services agreement with Volker Inc. for the Mill Street Town Creek Bridge project and authorizing the mayor to execute an additional construction engineering and inspection services agreement with Volker Inc. for the Mill Street Town Creek Project, federal aid project number STP dash seven two six one dash zero 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 two LPA one zero eight zero seven zero.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Which, uh, which Town Creek Bridge now we talking about?
Uh, just above the train station on, on Mill Street.
Why, why are we, um?
Councilwoman Lee?
Why are we terminating the contract and looking for another?
We're not looking for another one. This is a funny one. Uh, the original contract was federally funded, we needed to add additional funds to CNI, but there was no federal funds left, and because of technical reasons with Federal Highway and MDOT and their computer system, they couldn't just extend the contracts. They said, it's odd, but we got to close out the old contract, start new contract. It's just a technical thing up at the big federal computers.
Okay.
Is this the bridge they're working on currently?
Yes. They're almost, they're almost done. Yeah, right, right, just before the free loans. Almost done.
Probably should be driving over there.
All right, all, all in favor? All right, seven, seven, zero. All right, item number thirty-seven.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the contract of Fordice Construction Company, Inc., for the McRaven Road Bridge Project, project number ERBR dash two five zero four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any, uh, let me mention this, this is already finished, right?
We had the final inspection last week, um, this project ultimately ran over budget, even above this.
Okay.
While the Colonial Circle Bridge ran under budget, so we will be having that discussion in sales tax commission meeting as far as moving, asking them to move the under run to the overrun, and then do summary change order, closing both out in December.
All in favor? Councilwoman Lee? You didn't raise your hand. What say you? Yes, seven, zero. Next item?
Order ratifying procurement of traffic signal repair work at Hanging Mouse Road and Beasley Road from Lewis Electric, Inc., and authorizing payment to said vendor by Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved a proper second on this item?
Uh, please, colleagues, support this.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item?
Order ratifying procurement of parcel repairs provided by various vendors to Department of Public Works and authorizing payment to said vendors.
So moved.
It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Which vendors?
Oh, my.
A lot of them.
All's told.
Uh, can I, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
Question, Mr. Lee, uh, I'm not sure if you're the person, but you, uh, presented this with a lot of these towing services on there, and if you're not that person, can you get the message to that person that these towing services need to be picking up? They have debris after an accident.
Forty-three thousand.
And not leaving it on at intersections and stuff on the side of the road. Again, I don't know if, um, if you're a part of that hierarchy, but please.
I'll refer, that'll be JPD.
Thank you.
These are garage, these are garage-specific bills, but I'll refer that to JPD.
So, but they towed the vehicles from maybe an accident scene or abandoned scene to?
I think they're towing our vehicles that may have broke down.
Oh, these are our vehicles, city vehicles?
Yes. This is, this is garage-specific invoices.
Well, I'll have that discussion with Chief Wade. Thank you.
All in favor? Abstention? All right, item passes one, two, three, four, four, two, opposed, one extension. All right, item forty, I'm going to push to later because I know it's going to require some discussion that may, it's just going to require some lengthy discussion. Let's go on to item forty-one.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson and Officer Bernard Burton individually and officially in the capacity of Latise Galloway versus the City of Jackson, Mississippi, Officer Bernard Burton individually and officially, John Does, one through ten, Jane Does, one through ten, and ABC Corporations, one through ten, in the Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number Two, One Dash One Two Four Dash W L K.
Do, do we need to push this one back too?
No, I, I sent an email to the city council with a memo that was very detailed. If you have questions, we can go into executive session to discuss it, but I sent the email to everybody.
All right, let's go.
We need a motion in a second.
What's our email?
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved a proper second on this item.
Uh, any other question? Could we get, without getting into the meat of it?
Car accident with a JPD officer, uh, and a member of the public was struck.
A car ran over?
One of our JPD, it was a JPD vehicle, got into a car accident, it hit a car in pursuit of, they were on the way to an accident, and this is, this is for injuries to that individual that was struck. So, Latise was the person who was in the other car that got hit by our car.
Is the amount four hun- sorry, Mr. Banks? Put that on the record.
Say it again? It is right there?
It is a substantial amount of money, but there were also substantial medical bills. But it is, it is all in a confidential memo. But if you have questions, I, like I said, I'd be happy to take them to executive session.
Just, this is the staff recommendation based on that.
Correct. It was a mediation, we were happy that they showed up at mediation, um, and it was, uh, about a little bit over half a day mediation, but we, in the end, we were able to reach this agreement.
And both the parties were satisfied?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to be visited by Ben Crump or anything like that then?
No, but I will say on that item, we can, we, we have an update, for what it's worth, from Dexter Wade, if you want to talk about that later.
Now, just, this is staff recommendation, and I'll support it. Thank you.
All right, any, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain? All right, item carries five, two, I mean, five with two extensions, I'm sorry. Next item?
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, state of emergency.
So moved. It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item?
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item?
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, requesting the office of the city attorney to seek a dismissal of the P O five by Richards Disposal, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I would like to, if I could, offer some comments, um, on the record. Um, I did receive the memo from John Scanlon and Deshaun Martin. I want to make it clear that this is not to have an argument with the city council, but I do want this to be on the record for the public. Uh, John Scanlon and Deshaun Martin's memo lacks a citation to any statute or case law that supports their position. Um, they also lack any case law that shows where municipality has been victorious in making this argument. Uh, for the record, I would also like to say.
Whoa, 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 point, point order, because I, I don't want anything to go into the record that's, has the city attorney going against what could be the vote of the city council, uh, because we are.
This is a request from the city council for the office of the city attorney.
Right, we, we are your clients, you advise us if we give an order.
Well, am I advising you of this, or is another attorney advising you of this action?
Well, the other attorney.
I think we should put that in the record.
The other attorney gave advice based on what was said to the council from the judge, and it was saying we just want to remind.
That would be Judge Special Chancellor David Clark, who made a very clear, we cannot rewrite the Mississippi Constitution.
Hold on, hold, city attorney, are you in conflict with this item?
I am in conflict with this item.
Okay.
And I wanted to say for the record why I'm in conflict with this item.
That's noted, that's noted. All right, um, listen, you have been doing a great job, and I think that you continue to do a great job. We, we are in elected positions, and although there are times that we disagree, uh, if this body, which has the prerogative to speak as the governing authority, you advise, the best interests of the city is determined by those who are voting members of this body. The mayor has an opportunity to speak with his power to veto or not. And so, with all due respect, because, you know.
There is no authority for the city council to direct litigation. The city council's authority is to approve or disapprove settlement agreements.
Oh, okay, I hear you.
This is a request, and I would like to respond to the request.
Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to allow our attorney to argue with its client because that, that to me seems a little ethical.
It's a legal theory unsupported by the law. I would like to put that in the record.
I, I hear you, but I don't, I don't, I don't want to go as far as saying that there's levels, or there may be levels of distrust on even if we receive a proper guidance from you at this point, and I don't, I don't want to go there.
What I will say for the record is that we thoroughly discussed this in executive session, and we made it very clear why this was not in the best interest of the city of Jackson.
Because I, I don't want the optics to be, while we would like to protect the interests of this city and to make sure that we don't have to pay any extra fines, their RFP has been released, uh, um, you know, I don't, if, if the majority of this council says, you know, hey, we feel like there should be a motion dismissed, the council has the authority to do that. If it's not legal, or if you're advising us that it's not legal for us to do that, I, I think you've crew, you, you stated that already, then there are some other entity that might have to intervene to bring further clarity. However, I am not, if, if, if this council, I don't know what, what the will or what the pleasure of this council is going to be, I'm just saying that this is a democracy. This is not a dictatorship. We speak through a vote, and what we speak is reflected in the minutes. Even if the council wanted to do it just to have it in its minutes to say that the majority of this council wanted our desires to have a motion to dismiss, there shouldn't be the fear of any council member that's to say that they don't have representation from their city attorney, and I do know for a fact that there's a majority of council members that said, because we voted this way, we don't have representation. And if it is not the intent of the, of the city attorney to represent those council members, I mean, if we want to individually be separated out, then that's fine, but if the majority of the council says, look, we don't feel at all we were arbitrary and capricious, and we want representation to say that, matter of fact, we want a motion to dismiss, then an attorney that works for us should be able to, and if the attorney is refusing to do what its clients are asking them to do, I think that bears other problems and other situations that we will be willing to hire.
There's a very specific case law that says that there is no authority for you to direct litigation.
I have not seen that.
My actions are executive functions.
I have not seen that in writing. This has been on the agenda, this is carryover, you could have communicated that in writing. And at this point, I don't know if there's, I will allow members of the body to debate.
Question.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
I'm going to ask that if we're going to discuss this, we either table it or go into executive session. It's Thanksgiving.
Call for a vote.
And, and, you know, it is what it is at this point.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I just, I just ask one of those two things happen.
Yes, sir. I, I, look, at this point, you know, we got this, this has been lingering on, and, you know, I, I think that there are colleagues that desire representation, um, on this matter, and would like to see this dismissed so that we can move on to the next chapter. I mean, there's a new RFP out there, there's no need to hang this over our heads and this to be used as a threat, uh, to leverage deals over the council members' heads, asking them to.
I want to make it clear that your statements are in direction to me.
Come for a question, Mr. President.
Because if you are referring to the actions of the office of the city attorney, I want to make that clear on the record, because defamation is a cause of action.
Question has been called. Uh, clerk, the actions in the minutes are those that have the authority to speak in the minutes, which would be those of those of this body. All right, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm going to abstain, Mr. President.
All right, item.
I abstain.
All right, item passes four, zero. Next item? I mean, four with, with one, with no extension.
With three.
Three extensions.
With three extensions, I'm sorry, thank you.
Mr. President, this-
Next, next item?
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, hiring legal counsel to represent the city of Jackson on all matters, legal matters.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, could we hold item number forty-five to the next meeting?
Yes, sir, we would, I just, I just say if this action's gonna be taken, um, then, you know, legal, the first thing we had to do would be to defund the city attorney's office, so we really need to talk on if we're gonna do that. Next item?
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, offering sincere condolences and prayers to the family and friends of Dexter Wade.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second. It's been moving proper second on this item, any questions or comments?
I would like to state for the record, if the council would like an update on this case, we'd be happy to provide that in executive session.
Uh, this is just offering condolences?
Yeah, we should, maybe we should read this so everybody can hear.
Okay, go, go ahead, go ahead, read, read it to the record.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, offering sincere condolences and prayers to the family and friends of Dexter Wade. He will wipe away every tear from their eyes, and death shall be no more, neither shall there be mourning nor crying nor pain anymore. For the former things have passed away, and he who was seated on the throne said, behold, I am making all things new. Whereas the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi mourns the untimely death of Dexter Wade, and whereas the acknowledgement of this dreadful event cannot be, cannot begin to express the magnitude of sorrow expressed by the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi at the loss of his life, and whereas the passing of Dexter Wade is a tragedy, and there's no human tie that has been broken, we pray you are encouraged and consoled by the promise of, the promise of God, that he heals the broken hearted and binds up their wounds. Now therefore be it resolved that we embrace the family and friends of Dexter Wade during their time of grief and sorrow. We cannot replace your loss, but we will continue to pray that God gives you peace and comfort during these time try, trying times.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes, you have things you want to say on that?
Mr. President, I just think it's just a step in the right direction.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Councilor?
And I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilman Stokes, for, um, for stepping forward as a senior member of the council and, and expressing the condolences and prayers. And as a member of Ward five, I'd like to express the same sentiments, uh, and, um, and not to comment on the case, but it's, it's, it's tragic, and we just, um, we keep the family in there, um, family in our hopes and our prayers, and we expect extreme, serious condolences for their loss, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries nine, next item?
Thank you.
Order accepting the proposal of S P plus Corporation to provide meter parking systems operation management enforcement services and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement. So moved. Second.
Second. It's been moving proper second on this item, any questions or comments? Here nor another, all in favor?
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right, six, one abstention, item forty-nine.
Resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and the city council of the city of Jackson, Mississippi to enter into a loan with the, enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank at an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed forty million dollars to raise money for the purpose of the A, repair, maintenance, and/or reconstruction of roads, streets, and bridges based upon an equal share of the bonds perceived to be evenly distributed to each of the seven wards throughout the city, or as agreed upon the governing body lest the cost of issuance, B, storm water and drain improvements based upon an equal share of the bonds perceived to be evenly distributed to each of the seven wards throughout the city, or as agreed upon by the governing body lest the cost of issuance as authorized by sections twenty-seven dash sixty-seven dash thirty-one through twenty-seven dash sixty-seven dash thirty-five, as amended and supplemented from time to time in sections thirty-one dash twenty-five dash one, it's Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two, as amended and supplemented from time to time, see authorizing the use of the bond proceeds for emergency purposes as agreed upon by the governing body for uses allowed under the act, and D, funding capitalized interest in a debt service reserve fund if applicable, and paying the cost of issuance for the bonds and directing the publication of a notice of such intention and for related purposes. So moved.
It's been moving proper second on this item, any questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Foot?
Mr. President, I know this has been amended here, and, um, it's got drainage, and it's got the roads and bridges, so is this money not gonna be available for sewage repair?
This, that's under third party, Mr. Councilman Foot.
He doesn't have fully funding for sewage, I mean, he's, he doesn't have the, all the six hundred million dollars is all just for water.
The, 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 the money would come out of the enterprise, Councilman Foot, to go back into support the sewer.
Okay, I just, I'll make that point.
All right, but I, I understand what you're saying, that, that, that should be going after the additional funding, this is just-
Probably our biggest issue, quality of life issue in the whole city.
I, I hear you, I hear you, loud and clear. Yes, sir, Councilman Harley?
Yes, uh, Mr. Lee, have we exhausted all other means before we get to loan? I mean, I, we exhausted all our grants and other opportunities before we get to a place where we're gonna actually come up with a loan.
So what this, Robert Lee Public Works, so what this allows, similar to sales tax bond, is this allows us to have some upfront money to start larger projects that exceed what we would have in an average year. So on average, we get about ten million dollars in sales tax funds. What this allows to do, depending on what Mr. Harrison come up with as far as his, uh, financial numbers and everything, is have a larger upfront money where we can start a number of larger projects now, and then do a payback, it's kind of like buying a car. You don't, you know, put money in the piggy bank and hope you've got enough money after seven years, take out a loan, buy the vehicle that you choose, pay it back in six, seven years, whatever it is nowadays. Um, this will still allow us to have funds during the payback period for things that crop up, smaller projects, signal repairs, et cetera, et cetera. We're not loaning everything out to where we have no money for ten or fifteen years, similar to sales tax, even though we did larger projects upfront, we still have money year to year to do paving, to do bridge work, et cetera.
Does, does that include street striping, and, uh, like you, you mentioned traffic signals?
Yes, so-
Because we've had a big problem with, with them lately.
No, streets, bridges, drainage are all included in that, and, you know, painting the roads, having functional red lights, that's part of the street work.
So it, it does include?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? You got a question? All right, all in favor? All right, item passes seven zero. Colleagues, we'll go back to number forty.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Premier Public Defender Services, P L L C, to provide indigent, indigent defender legal services for the city of Jackson, Mississippi. So moved, second.
It's been moving proper second, any questions or comments?
Mr. Pre-
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. My question was, and, and I just got this document from, um, Mr. Howard, the, whether he was this organization, Premier, um, what's the proper title?
Premier Public Defender Services?
Premier Public Defender Services, whether they were registered with the Secretary of State's office, I had somebody call me, contact me, and wanted to make sure and find that out, and this, um, evidently is the registration, so that, that's satisfied. The, the other question I had was one for the city attorney, that is, I know that the, the incumbent vendor, uh, first got their job, I guess, through an RFP back in nineteen ninety-four, along, I think so, I think that's an RFP.
I actually would disagree with that statement, to my understanding, the original contractor was Charles Griffin, and when Charles Griffin left, he passed it down to Nick Coleman, and Nick Coleman has been the person that we've had that contract with since-
Okay, but was there originally a word on an RFP?
To my knowledge, it was not an RFP, I did not find any details of an RFP.
Okay, well, regardless, I mean, I, I thought I read somewhere there was RFP, but my question is, why did you decide to do it this way versus doing an RFP?
Because we already had Tim Howard performing the services. So we already had Tim Howard as a supplement performing the services. We also had already communicated with the incumbent that we had a number of issues, both administrative and performance. And so because Tim Howard was already there, he's already been in that courtroom, the municipal court judges have all praised his actions in the courtroom, we chose to move forward with the contract with Tim Howard.
Okay, so the co-contract is gonna be twenty thousand dollars, is that correct?
Twenty thousand dollars per month, correct, which the prior, the incumbent's contract was fifteen thousand dollars a month, and the prior contract with Tim Howard was five thousand dollars a month, so it's just combining those two contracts. But under that contract, Tim Howard has the authority to hire other attorneys to work under him.
Okay, that answered my questions, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. President, um, and I know it's Thanksgiving, and we trying to get out and do some other things, um, could we hold this item to the next meeting? To give us a chance to kind of make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and make sure everyone's on the same page as to what's going on?
Y- yes.
Um, I just wanted to say I'm ready to vote, I've done a ton of work, of research on this, and I'm ready to vote, Mr. Banks.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we call for the vote, you know, I don't know, um, if it were today, I think it might be the temperature to hold this if we want to get, uh, complete passage, uh, just to add some questions, uh, um-
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
What, what is some of the unreadiness, because this was discussed at length yesterday, uh, in, in, in the work session, and Mr. Howard provided a really good, positive plan that will help to move the cases along in the municipal court. And our municipal court is suffering, our municipal judges are calling for this, and, uh, I think it's incumbent upon us to go ahead and do what we need to do to support them and their work, as well as, you know, support the citizens as they move through the municipal judicial system. I'm ready to vote, sir.
Okay, uh, any, any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, I still ask that we hold this item to the next meeting, I haven't received the first letter from the first judge, and I represent more poor people, probably my ward, and criminals than anybody else, and I haven't heard a lot of them complain about, uh, the way they've been represented yet, but if we want to make a change, I need to know why. I have never voted against Mr. Howard because of his father, and I've tried to keep my vote straight with the father, but the position is, this is Thanksgiving, and I don't think we need to have blood on the floor at Thanksgiving. There's no difference between holding this now and voting at the next meeting.
All right, uh, you asked, Councilwoman Lee, I mean, hold on. Who, who, go ahead, Councilwoman Lee, then, Council, Councilman Harley?
I just want to reiterate the sentiments of some of my colleagues who are ready to vote, I am ready to vote, we had a lengthy discussion yesterday, I am confident in Tim Howard's ability, and I'm ready to vote.
Councilman Harley?
Uh, yes, I just, um, uh, and from yesterday's discussion and knowing what I know about Mr., Mr. Howard, look, um, I'd like for you to describe the change, I think Councilman Stokes were asking about the change and having time to mull that over and so forth. If you could, tell them, uh, maybe briefly, you know, what we're asking for today, and how that's gonna impact folks, especially poor folks that needs representation, and your whole program, how that's gonna work out.
Okay, well, let me, let me first say that I in no, um, I in no way, uh, want to demean anybody else on anything, so what I talk about is proactively about what we intend to do as opposed to-
Be honest now.
Right, as opposed to what anybody else is doing. One of the things, uh, and, and I, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit distracted, but one of the things that, um, that we want to do is I want to work with the prosecutor to make sure that we're going after grants, uh, the Department of Justice has grants for dedicated domestic violence courts, the Department of Justice has grants, uh, for mental health courts. There is a mental health court that's been established by, um, by Judge Faith Peterson, and there are things in the court, it's just, I, I, it's just like any other department, it's just like water, it's just like streets, if your department is not moving forward, then it's falling backward. And your municipal court is very important, there is a lot of money, revenue that comes through that court, and so the thing about it is that, um, I would like to get in there, work with the prosecutor, get some DOJ grants, and also, in that particular court that I'm working in, uh, that court, uh, we address a lot of pre-trial intervention matters. We address a lot of matters dealing with, uh, sending individuals to, uh, Batters, uh, the Batters Intervention Program. I particularly work with, uh, an individual from Hines Behavioral Health System, uh, and in that, uh, behavioral health system, what we do is, is that, uh, we work with that individual, and we send people to the crisis stabilization unit. Also, if, uh, a person is in sore need of some type of civil commitment, or some type of alcohol and drug, um, commitment, then we do that as well. So it's a, so far, the courtroom that I'm in is a very innovative courtroom, and we have a wonderful judge that, you know, looks at every particular defendant and does not treat a defendant like a herd. These are not herd, these are people, and we have to treat them like people, even though they have been accused of a crime. And I think it's very important how we talk to them, I think it's very important how we interact with them, and I always make sure that I meet with my clients before we go to court. That, that, and, and, you know, people criticize me for that, it was like, well, you can make twenty-five hundred on a, on a DUI, why are you doing this? Thing about it is that I care, and it's very important. And I would like to say, and I will go ahead on and say this, that I, I wrote a letter, uh, and I did, you all know me, when I came to the city attorney, was the first thing I did. I extended my, uh, letter to the former city attorney, Monica, Monica Joyner, and I extended an invitation to, uh, James Anderson. I'm so glad, and I, one of your, one of the members told me, they was like, well, great, because his, his term is about to run out with the council, um, and I think that worked out very well. I'm a person that I always want to respect institutional knowledge, always. So I always, I'm gonna send out, and I'm gonna ask, if somebody's already doing what I'm been asked to do, I'm gonna say, hey, do you want to join, do you want to come along? And I made that, I made that invitation, um, that invitation was not accepted, uh, and I made that invitation maybe three months ago, okay, because I respect that. But I also respect, uh, when the administration wants to change and wants to go into a different direction. So I, what I do over there, like I said, on Thursday, on Thursday mornings, especially Thursday, but I'm, I'm over there, you know, a lot more than that, but on Thursdays, we're supposed to be in that court from nine to twelve, and I get there at eight-thirty, I meet with the clients individually, and we, we are, we are there sometimes till six o'clock. I'm working with the prosecutor, we're negotiating cases, we're talking about how to make the court paperless, how to make the court better. We'll have the judge sit there, and she'll sometimes eat lunch with us, and she will sit there, and people will still come through the door at two o'clock, I'm late for, I just got off work, I'm late, we'll deal with them right then and there. And so even though we're supposed to be there from nine to twelve, that means nothing to us, because what, what matters to us is that Jackson Municipal Court is appreciated, Jackson Municipal Court is respected, and, and I want to, um, continue what's been, uh, going on over there, but I also want to kick it up a couple of notches. And I'm gonna be honest with you, because we have such a heavy load coming up in January, it's, it's critically important that we get started. I have individuals who tried capital murder cases that I've talked to, that said, you know, Tim, we're gonna come along with you, and we're going to work with you on this. They tried capital murder cases, they tried all kind of fraud cases, they're willing to lay aside what they do, they're willing to lay aside private money that they could make bundles on to come along and to help and to push our court, and to make our court the best, and I'm, I'm gonna be quiet, but to make our court the best municipal court in the state. When we had COVID, people would call me all the time from different municipalities, and they said, what are y'all doing? You know, help us with our regulations, help us think about what we need to do with COVID, well, they should be doing that same thing with the municipal court, what are y'all doing? Help us with that, help us to go paperless, help us get a, a dedicated domestic violence court, help us get a mental health, uh, uh, court, help us to work with community stakeholders like y'all are working with. So I, I humbly ask for a vote today so that I can work with the people that have said that they are committed to doing this, and I still respect institutional knowledge, and I'm still, that's still in the back of my head, how can I work with individuals who may be there? I have not foreclosed any particular door on that, but I'm, I've pleaded with the vote for today so that I can do what I need to do as an attorney.
And, and, yeah, yeah, I just appreciate, and I appreciate the passion, and look, Laura Segman, our communities aren't giving, uh, aren't being given quality, uh, legal protection, and so I appreciate the passion, with its worth, and, uh, just wanted to see, uh, from my colleague, Mr. Stokes, uh, you know, if, I think he mentioned that, um, the work with other folks, uh, that may make this time sensitive, I'm, I'm trying to get a feel, are, are you still have some evidence?
And, and Councilmember, I still ask that we hold this to the next meeting. I have no, never voted against, uh, uh, Mr. Howard on anything he comes for, and the reason I haven't, because of the respect and love I have for his father, and I don't think it'll make that much difference if we vote today or next week, only thing, today, I'm not voting for him, next week I will, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. All right. So let me ask this. Is there, let me ask the straw poll on those who would like to hold the vote. Let me do this. The straw poll on those who would like to hold the vote. Okay, you ready to vote? All right, all in favor? All opposed? Abstain. All in passes. All right. The vote was five, one, one. Item fifty. Mr. Stokes.
Mr. President, I'm gonna hold my discussion items, respect for Thanksgiving, trying to give everybody a chance to get out and do some shopping and...
All right. Item fifty-one. Mr. Stokes, you gonna hold that too?
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Foote? New garbage RFP.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. The new garbage RFP has come out, and there's a couple of issues that I had with it I wanted to express my concerns about. The, and I'll just mention the three particular points that I have concerns about. I know the mayor's wants to have the cheapest, you know, or the lowest priced possible. I think there's several provisions within the contract that could end up making it much more expensive than it needs to be. The first is the need for dismissal of the lawsuit, which we just went through on item forty-four. I think the fact that that lawsuit is still hanging out there has added a, make it, made it more difficult for vendors to potentially come in and give us competitive bids. They're concerned about that as a, as a, it's basically weaponized the RFP in a way that is gonna end up making the potential fewer competitors, and they'll have a higher bids, a higher cost because of the uncertainty that, of the lawsuit. The second point is, there's a requirement in there that for vehicles to be two years old or newer, which is a, certainly wasn't in the previous RFP. And I, I think that has the consequence of eliminating or disqualifying a lot of the local EBO minority contractors out there. I won't name them by name, but there's a number of them in the Jackson area that have been EBO, participated in EBO programs with garbage contracts, but their, this vehicle requirement of the age the vehicle would eliminate, would disqualify them. So, and that adds to the cost of the project as well. The cost of, for the submitting bids will be higher because of that particular cost. It seems to favor one particular potential bidder, but I think that's a feature that undermines the competitive nature of the potential bids. And the third point I'll make is that the fines, there's fines of $1,000 for not having two hoppers on the back of each truck, $1,000 a day if a, if a truck is seen by the potential vendor with only one hopper in the back of the truck and when, and they require two hoppers. The, I think that's micromanaging the process or the business to a point where the, with those kind of gotcha features to the contract, you end up with a much more expensive bids coming in. So it will, it will result in a higher cost than otherwise necessary. Heinz County recently let a garbage contract where there's no hoppers on the back of the truck. And we should be open to different potential ways to pick up the garbage offered by the professionals, which is the people bidding on our business, and not be setting out specific details that can make the bid higher or the cost of the service higher. And lastly, the, I think it's important that we get as many bidders as possible, because if you want to get a low price, which I think we all want to get a low price, you need as many potential bids coming in as possible. And my fear is, the way the RFP is written, we'll only have one or two possible bidders because of these provisions, you know, especially the fact of the dismissal of the lawsuit hanging there as a, as a potential threat to whoever gets the best, whoever would be awarded the contract. So I think it's important, I think there's some flaws in the RFP that concern me and will keep us from getting as low a price for our garbage contract as we ought to get. Thank you.
Councilman Harley?
Yes. Look, we've been adding, or I've been asking for the RFP a while. And we are six, seven months after our last solid waste emergency in our city. And my thoughts is, first of all, thanks to the administration for going ahead and trying and doing basically what the state laws and ask of us to do, number one. And that's, that's the basic. But I also would like to make sure I say this, we shouldn't have a system that's going to get, have a predetermined outcome. When we request for proposal, we're asking everyone out there to put in a bid that's going to help the citizens of Jackson, okay? Based on their needs. Not to, the bid is not supposed to be gearing towards one particular vendor. And so I echo some of the same sentiments as Councilman Foote in saying this, you know, I don't see where someone asks for carts. We've had, under the last, our past discussions, that wasn't one of the things that folks have been asking for. They want two days a week pickup. They want their rubbish or their bulky items picked up on the second collection day. They want it away from their house. They want a reasonable company out there doing that. And so I agree, and I would hope that we can make the RFP to the point where we can gather as many vendors as possible to guarantee a low price. So again, I appreciate the administration for doing basically what the state law asks to do, and that is to go through an RFP process. I wish it had been done back in May, June, and I think we're on the right track. Right now, we have a company suing us, but I think that, you know, that shouldn't be a pressure tactic to get the long-term contract. And so with that said, I agree that as we move forward, that we need to have this process as transparent as possible to the public. Also, we need to have this as open to as many bidders as possible. And you do that by not putting in little specific thing that will guarantee, especially our minority companies around us that are actually in the city of Jackson, from putting forth their bids, requirements such as, oh, well, you have to have this new truck out here and so forth. And again, that's basically all I have to say on that. And I appreciate your opinion on the agenda, Mr. Foote.
Yes.
Just for clarity, because, you know, it gets confusing. Is this a lawsuit or is it an appeal of the vote? And...
It's an appeal of the vote. It's an appeal of the vote.
And so, so what's the difference?
Hold, let, 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 let me recognize you. Attorney Martin.
Tori Martin, Office of the City Attorney. It is an appeal of a vote, and there's a statutory right to that appeal. So the difference is, when you file a lawsuit, you file a complaint. This is not a complaint alleging that we did something. This is an appeal of a decision that has been made. So there's a statute that allows any aggrieved party to file an appeal based on the actions of the governing of the order. So that's what this is.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I haven't received a copy of the RFP. I don't, that's the first thing. I would like a chance to look at the RFP before I supported what the citizens wanted, picking up two times a week without a garbage can. Older people cannot handle that garbage can. Even in the rural area today, because these older people can't lift these garbage cans, they leave the garbage can at the street and they have to walk their garbage and empty it into the can at the street for the garbage to be picked up, which is an inconvenience to older people who are paying taxes to have their garbage picked up. So that's my first concern. Secondly, as I've said over and over again, any member of this council should be involved with the whole process, seeing how the votes are calculated and everything else, so it'll be open and above board. Otherwise, we're gonna catch ourselves in the same situation where some gonna feel that this was not fair, the process was tainted, and they'll vote this way or that way. We need to do everything we can to make sure all council members feel that this process is fair to any and all people who want to bid on it. We need to make sure that council members have a part in the procedure so that when they get a chance to take a final vote, they will not feel that is some shenanigans taking place. My suggestion again, I don't care which member of the council it is, but allow a council member to be involved with the process from A through Z. Let that council member brief other council members as to what's taking place, and everybody will then be on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Are there any, yes, sir, Ms. Harley?
Yeah, just one final thing, and that is, I agree with my colleague, and I really believe that at one time we were talking about having an independent party. Now, all of this is not required of the city. The city administration is not required to do this. But in the spirit of us working together, we could have a council member just to observe the process. Because again, we have some, we have some issues that we need to work through, and the people are requiring us to do that. And so I would, I would support just a request to the administration, just have an observer so that we can all be on that same page and we can all move this thing forward for them. Because they're not gonna put up with the repeat of the, of the things that we've been going through the last year and a half, almost two years. And they shouldn't. So thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. The only other discussion is fifty-four, review continuation in COVID-19 local emergency. Colleagues, we just require if we're gonna keep voting on these emergency, to have something either written or have something either stated or said that it is sufficient for the emergency. I would accept those in writing so that we could just have them to be attached to the memo saying is the reason why. Say it again? Yes. And then item fifty-five, fifty-three. Oh, discussion centralization. We did receive that in work session. Did you make sure everybody got that electronically? Yeah, just make sure everybody got that.
Just email us. Email us for that.
Yeah. I gave, I gave Councilman Stokes a copy. All right. And then the other one is, just by showing hands, item fifty-five, monthly financial reports as required, received. All right, received. Anything else to come before this body?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I hope we'll close the meeting in honor of Mr. Eddie Cruz, Mr. Godfrey Stokes, Jr., and Mr. Earl Dampier, senior. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Wanna close this meet also saying, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and congratulations all Korn State University.
You ain't had to go that far.
And thank you, pair of you. All right. If there's nothing else to come before this body, meet the juror.